Order of the City Planning Commission Meeting Thursday, September 6, 2012. And, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
I'll be the clerk today since I have the mic and she doesn't.
Okay.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Capanella.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan, who is absent, and Chair Lodge.
Here.
Thank you.
That brings us to preliminary matters. First is action on review of the following minutes and resolutions. The draft minutes of August 9, 2012, and Resolution 01212 for 909 Caia Cortita.
Move to approve.
Second, and under discussion, I do have a revision.
All right. Commissioner Bartlett?
On the resolution for 909 Caia Cortita, page 2, down at the bottom, I think next to the last line it should say Chair of the Planning Commission rather than Chairman.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay. There were a couple of other similar corrections that I sent to the Secretary for.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I believe on the minutes of August 9, on the second page, paragraph C3, a comment was made on growth management, and it says affordable unit density program. That should be average unit density program.
Actually, it's the average unit size density. Oh, I know it's referred to as AUD, but AUD doesn't make any sense.
Is it page?
It said page 2. Any other corrections? All right, then, on the motion to approve as corrected, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Abstention? I was absent from the meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Abstention, Commissioner Schwartz abstains. All right. Are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items? Staccato?
None of those things, and no appeals or announcements either.
Okay. That brings us to comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. Is there anyone who wish to speak under this part of the hearing? I'm not seeing anyone come forward. I will close that part of the hearing, and we will go on to ... Excuse me, getting myself back to the back page. Item 3, which is a new item, application of Jim Zimmerman, architect, for Anita Davenport at 1533 Shoreline Drive, 01 family residence in coastal overlay zones, general plan designation, low-density residential. Okay. Staff report?
Good afternoon. Chair Lodge and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Kelly Brodessen, Community Development Department. And as you said, the project I am presenting today is a two-story addition at 1533 Shoreline Drive. The project is on the mesa, and it's on the ocean side of Shoreline Drive, mid-block between Loyola Drive and Santa Cruz Boulevard. The 19,000-square-foot lot is currently developed with a 2,000-square-foot single-story residence and a 345-square-foot garage. The applicant is proposing a 1,200-square-foot second-story addition, and a 92-square-foot first-floor addition, and a remodel. The applications before you today are a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and two modifications to add a second story to an existing building which is within the interior setbacks. Just to give a little bit of history on the property, in 1957, the original house with a detached carport and workshop were built. They were built five feet away from the interior setbacks on the east and west side. In 1962, a lot split was conducted and created the 7,300-square-foot front lot that you see on this slide. It's called 1537 Shoreline, and it is currently vacant. In 1987, there was an addition approved in this area of the property. It received a modification to also encroach one foot into the setback so that it would be in line with the existing structure there on the east side. In 1999, a remodel was done, and then in 2000, the garage was converted from a carport. See, the lot split in 1962 created kind of an unusual situation where the driveway and the garage are on the opposite side of the property as the arm of the flag lot which leads to the street. The site plan here shows you how it could create access issues in the future. However, the applicant owns both properties. I'll go back to this slide here. They own both of the properties, and they've agreed to a lot tie agreement which would be recorded to both properties so that the two lots would be treated as a single lot for zoning purposes. Regarding the interior setback modification, here's a slide showing the first and second floor plans. The new second-story addition will comply with all of the required six-foot setbacks in the E3 zone. However, the existing house, as I previously stated, is only five feet from the property line on the east and west side. Zoning ordinance allows for conforming additions to non-conforming buildings provided that the basic exterior characteristics of the replacement building are not being changed. Here's a slide showing the section of the proposed project. The second story and the remodel will change the basic exterior characteristics, and therefore modifications are required to add on to the second story. The new second story, however, is 13 feet away from the west property line and 24 feet from the east property line. The second-story balcony is 16 feet from the adjacent neighbors to the west. The windows and the balconies were designed to maximize the privacy of the adjacent neighbors, so the modification can be supported because the proposed addition allows for an appropriate improvement on the lot. Here's a close-up of the second-story plan showing ... I tried to highlight the property lines there to show you the distance that the second story is away from the property line. Here's a slide showing the elevations. The Single Family Design Review Board has reviewed the proposed project and stated that its appearance is consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and the Single Family Design Board approved of the quality of architectural design, materials, and landscape. The Board finds that the proposed modification is aesthetically appropriate, and it does not pose consistency issues with the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines. And here's some slides showing some nearby two-story residences. We're all familiar with Shoreline Drive, so it's a pretty good mix of one- and two-story structures throughout. The project can be found consistent with the general plan and the local coastal plan because it is in a neighborhood that contains a mix of one- and two-story homes with a variety of architectural designs. The project will be setback more than 100 feet from the street front and would not inhibit any existing public views to, from, or along the ocean, or any scenic areas. Also, the project would not contribute to bluff erosion or undercutting of the slope because no new construction will take place within the 75-year sea cliff retreat line for this property. The proposed project with the approval of the modification conforms to the city's zoning and building ordinances and the policies of the general plan and the local coastal plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project and the two modifications, making the findings in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. Jim Zimmerman is the architect, and he is here today to make a presentation, and we also have some correspondence from neighboring property owners that should have been provided to you. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Good, thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions for staff at this point, or shall we go on to the applicant's presentation? Okay. Mr. Zimmerman, you have up to 15 minutes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, double Commissioners, I'm Jim Zimmerman, architect for Anita and Rich Davenport. They would like to have been here today. They live in Minnesota, and they're trying to get their affairs together so that they can come out and live in their new home. The Davempors did hand-deliver and met with the 10 closest neighbors, and notices were mailed out on the 300-foot radius of the property. On February 27, we presented the design to the Single Family Design Board and received positive comments from all the board members. The Board finds that the project is consistent with appearance and has neighborhood compatibility. We addressed the privacy issues. There were two people or one letter that was presented at the Design Review Board, and that was Mr. Bockus, who felt that he was losing some privacy on his property. And we did discuss that with him after the meeting, and we explained to him that the windows that are on the second floor would not cause any privacy issues with him. We did, you know, it's taken seven months to get to this stage, and we hope that we can move ahead with your approval. I think that Kelly did a great job, and we enjoyed working with her on putting all the Dart recommendations together. We did receive approval on the geological and archaeological improvements, including the soils investigation improvement. So we have spent a lot of time and effort, and hopefully we can move ahead. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Zimmerman, you mentioned that there have been some privacy concerns, and you noted specifically those of Mr. Bockus. Could you identify if there are additional neighbor concerns regarding that, or did they primarily come from Mr. Bockus?
There's an adjacent neighbor to the west that had written a letter on being concerned about privacy. The Davempors did meet with them when they went around with the 10 closest neighbors, and at that time, they didn't have an issue with adding the second floor. And now recently, there has been a letter written concerned about privacy.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Could I also mention, we are ... The second floor is about, I think, 15 feet from the property line, adjacent to her property.
Madam Chair? Yes. Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Jim, could you discuss the attic and the cupola's function for the attic?
Well, the attic happened because the owner would like to retain the existing framing for the existing living room. It's all open beam, and it's really a beautiful ceiling. So we've designed an attic above that space so that we can retain the ceiling below. Also, what that ... You call it a gable, and what that gable does, that receives the intersecting ridges from both sides. So you have the gable coming up, and then you have the ridges coming in to meet, and it gives the design balance, and it also makes it symmetrical on both sides, which the Board, Design Board, really liked. Also, the cupola, you know, you drive up the coastline, and in Maine, New England, all the coastal cottages had these small cupulas, and I think that adds a lot to the design.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up on Commissioner Larson's question, I know the attic came up at the site visit, and then we also would ask staff to confirm whether or not the restriction that originally, I think, had been drafted in the Single Family Design Guidelines to count the square footage for attics over five feet, but I was unable to find it. Was that stricken in the final version, or where did the Design Guidelines come down on that?
For lots, Chair Lodge and Commissioner Bartlett, for lots that are over 15,000 square feet, the FAR requirement is a guideline, so it's not a requirement per the ordinance. And if there is floor area that has a height of five feet or more, it should be counted as floor area. And in this case, Mr. Zimmerman did not include that in his floor area because of the way the ceiling is designed on the first floor below, and also because of the attic bracing that he's going to be installing. So without counting the attic, the FAR would be at exactly 85 percent. If you do include the attic as floor space, it would be approximately 156 square feet, and it would put the FAR at 88 percent.
Which would then trigger the 20 closest homes analysis and all the things that we don't see today.
Only if it was on a lot smaller than 15,000 square feet.
Oh, okay.
And this is a lot that's 19,000 square feet, not including the smaller lot in the front.
And then a question from Mr. Zimmerman. You also have windows into this useless attic.
The windows are around 18 inches by 18 inches, and when you look at the elevation, it's a design element. We have the upper portion with these small windows going around the perimeter, and if the Commissioners have a problem with that, we can eliminate those, but they are strictly design elements.
Okay. And then in looking through the Single Family Design Guidelines, I'm not sure if this came up when you went to the Single Family Board, but on page 81N, they have diagrams with pluses and minuses of how to orient your building mass on hillside lots to sort of provide the most available view corridors for your uphill neighbors. And in all these diagrams, they don't want you to locate your house either directly in front of your neighbor or turn it broadside so that they're looking at the full width of your ridge. They want the mass rotated the other way so you're looking parallel with the ridge so that everybody can share views. And it doesn't seem to be the way the massing on this whole second-story addition was put together, and I don't know if that came up when you went through the Single Family Design Boards. There's about two sentences in there, and I didn't see it, so.
Well, you know, the second-floor addition aligns with the first floor, and if we couldn't rotate it because of the structural setback on the cliffside, we couldn't rotate the house and design it that way. Also, the way the house was located in reference to the lot in the front, we couldn't go over that property line. So we had to design the house like it is, like the second floor is now.
Okay. Well, that leads me to a question that I guess is partially for you and partially for staff relative to the second lot. I know at the site visit, you were saying that your client is looking to reconfigure the lot line, so I don't know if you want to put the site plan up so that this lot line that runs on an angle, you said they were going to try and square it off so that it would be parallel with the front of the house. And if there's a lot tie agreement, which this whole design is based on, you've utilized the area of both lots to justify this size of house. No? Isn't the square footage, the square footage is only the smaller lot? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The bigger lot.
All right. I was just trying to understand what the intent would be in changing that if you can't really ever split these lots and use them separately. So I was curious why they're going through that whole effort of reconfiguring those lot lines when you have a lot tie agreement.
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Bartlett, I'll go ahead.
Ms. Brodesson?
I don't think the applicant is actually proposing that. The reason why the staff looked at it and actually thought it was problematic is because of the way the house was there in the '50s, and then in the '60s, a lot split was created. And somehow, the arm of the lot, and I think this slide shows it better, is not on the same side as the driveway and the garage. So staff is looking at that, thinking, how can we correct this issue? We don't want to force the owner to merge the lots, and so we thought the best way to handle it would be to do a lot tie agreement so that the lot cannot be sold separately in the future without the staff approving the separation.
But this was brought up at the site meeting. If they pursue reconfiguration, moving the finger of the flag lot to the other side and running the line parallel to the front of the house, then it would be able to be split off separately for another house? The lot tie agreement would go away?
Theoretically, yeah. We'd have to look at, you know, this NPO, we'd have to go to Design Review for the structural setbacks.
Right.
It wouldn't be easy.
Yeah. I read this and just assumed that the area for both lots had been figured in, so I'm glad that you clarified that. So that's it for my questions.
Anyone else with questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Capanella?
On the attic, how is that accessible?
There would be, there would be just an access door. I think what's required into an attic space would be 22 inches by 30 inches. It'd just be access to be able to get in there.
Okay. That's not shown currently on the plans, correct?
That's correct. It's not shown, no, no. The attic is framed, the required framing for the attic is such that it can never be used for anything. There can never be a floor put in. The framing is about 30 inches on center on cross bracing, and so it'd be really, really difficult to try to make that habitable in any way.
The attic space and the hallway space that are shown on the map here, and I understand why it's there, that's to accommodate this quite gently sloping exposed-beam ceiling that exists on the first floor. So there actually wouldn't even be a level floor in this space in the attic space.
That's correct, yes, Madam Chair.
It also looks like, to me, like totally waste space, and that the owners could still have an exposed-beam ceiling, albeit a flat one, and the attic eliminated, the whole thing pulled in. It looks like it could be pulled in another 10 to eight feet. And to me, the way the building is now, I understand that you said that the Single Family Design Review Board liked the symmetry of the walls coming up and matching, but it seems rather massive to me and bulky, and if that space were eliminated, then it would be pulled in, and the bedrooms up there are quite large. There would be a, there would be more of an open feeling there.
Well, I think the design hinges on the roof being lower on the sides, going up to a ridge, and the ridge has to terminate into something. I think that we would lose symmetry if we had the upper roof on both sides and then drop down. I think we'd just lose the symmetry of the design. You have to have access across the front to get to the two bedrooms, so you would still have to have a, you know, higher roof at that point.
But I guess I understand that, but the hallway is practically a room size itself. All right, well, any other questions for Mr. Zimmerman? If not, thank you, and we have a number of ... Okay. Mr. Sweeney. I see it pointed out to me that you are here. Did you want to make some comments at this point, or ... Okay. All right, then, thank you.
Thank you.
The first speaker will be Jan Griffin, and she will be followed by, hold on just a moment, David and Fay Bisno.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I apologize you have nothing in writing for me, but that's because I wasn't noticed about the impending home that was going to be done. I live at 1542 Santa Rosa Avenue. I've taken pictures. I wasn't even aware until I looked out my kitchen window Thursday and saw these orange things going up. And unfortunately, you were closed Friday and Monday. I did call Tuesday morning. I called Mr. Zimmerman's office on Thursday, but I didn't get a return call. So I did speak to someone Tuesday morning, and they suggested I try to get something in writing, but there just wasn't enough time. My concern is, we built, there's two houses there, and it's under the Bernice Pennington Trust. We have a vacation rental in the front, and we have a two-story Spanish-style home in the back. We built that about 13 years ago. We jumped through a lot of hoops to get that house built. We had to take into consideration the height of the house, some of the things that you were discussing, visibility. And my real concern is that we advertise that there is an ocean view, a partial ocean view for the vacation rental. We have provided $8,000 in taxes for the use, for the transient occupancy. And as you can see from these pictures.
Would you give those to staff, and staff, could you pass those on to us?
It's going to totally block our view from both our homes. We live with this in our backyard ever since we built our home, and it doesn't seem to be anything that can be done about it. And so the only thing that I have is a small view for the ocean, as you can tell from the picture. And with this home going up being two-story, we will not have a view anymore. And like I said, part of my advertising for the vacation rental is the partial view, and we do get substantial people that come because there is a partial view. We built a special area so that they could sit on the patio and see the ocean view and have a coffee or glass of wine or something, and we're not going to have that now. So that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. David and Fay Bisno?
Chair Lodge, Ms. Bisno is not here, so Mr. Bockus is going to read a letter from her on her behalf, but he also wants to speak.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Thank you. Represented by Michael Bockus.
Can someone adjust this for me? No, I'm just kidding.
You're just going to have to shrink.
Hi, I'm Michael Bockus, and I am going to read the letter that Fay and David Bisno have sent in. It says, "Dear Ms. Brodesson, my husband, David, and I are on the East Coast and are very disappointed not to be able to attend this public hearing, but we very much appreciate being heard nevertheless. We are the owners of 1539 Shoreline Drive and the next-door neighbors to the property of Rick and Anita Davenport." This is in bold. "We are extremely concerned about the scope of the second-story project as it will greatly impact our privacy as well as the privacy of the property of 1541 Shoreline Drive directly behind our property. We would very much appreciate the Davempors taking our concerns seriously and addressing them through a revision of their plans. Attached are photos that were taken in our backyard which demonstrate very clearly what the major privacy issues are. This is our second letter of concern, and we do hope that our privacy issues are taken into account when this large addition is evaluated by the Planning Commission. Many thanks, Fay and David Bisno." Many thanks, Fay and David Bisno.
Okay, thank you. Well, while you're there, before you sit down, you're next, speaking for yourself.
I didn't know if I was next in line. Hi, I'm Michael Bogus and I'm at 1541 Shoreline Drive, which is right at an angle from, yes, right there. And I just would like to clear up a couple of things, too, that happened in February, just so that you're aware. I was here at the meeting, 8:00 in the evening, for the Single Family Design Board and they actually wanted me to get pictures of the project from our point of view. So they asked me for those. Second point is just because an architect says that privacy will not be an issue, doesn't make it so. And third is that Fay Bisno has always had an issue with the second story of this project. And also, our home is not outlined on the, on the plans either. I don't know if that's important or not. It's just the Bisno's property that's outlined on the plans there. I work from home and I woke up.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Bogus, but could you go back to that previous slide? That is your, that is indicated there on?
But on, on the plans that I looked at, I did not see our home outlined there. It was just the outline of the Bisno's property.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. When the polls were put up a few days ago, we got a taste of this project. Since I work at home, the workers were there all day and they were glancing down into our home, our property, right in, you can see right into our kitchen, our dining room, part of the great room, and our bedroom from their roof. And that was just one day. We were, me and my wife were very uncomfortable that day, just thinking of what was to come. So that was just one day for us and then we thought, let's multiply that by the rest of our life. So we wake up in the morning, first thing we see was the second story. You walk out of our bedroom, you see the second story. We sit down with a coffee at our dining room table. The second story is there. While my wife is cooking, the second story is there. When we walk out into our backyard on the landing and we have some areas for sitting, for entertaining, the second story is there. We can get away from it by going to our two bathrooms, standing around our front door entry, or we can go to the east wall of our great room. So that's where we can go to get away from the second story. We truly believe this property needs to be neighbor-friendly. I can't stress that enough, a neighbor-friendly project here. And they're just, there has to be a way of the Davempors to take advantage of that unobstructed ocean view while not encroaching into our homes with the privacy issue. There has to be a way of that being done. We value our privacy and I truly believe that all of you would be concerned if your neighbor was able to look into your home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Ilona Miller. And she will be the last speaker.
Hi, I'm Ilona Miller. I live at 1527 Shoreline, so it's next door on the east side. And I just, one general question through all this, and I certainly sympathize with the, the west side. I just was thinking about the height of the architectural appendage and how high that's allowed to go. What, what heights are we looking at there? It's just something from the, the general public will see going by and a loss of, of view from the other side of Shoreline is certainly going to happen. So it's just one of those things, I just wanted to make sure before it goes up, what, what the height would be. And that's, second story going up in your, in your yard is always a second story going up. So, thank you.
Thank you. I was looking for the, the height of the ridgeline myself on the plans and I couldn't find it. Or, is it, oh, it's on that page.
Madam Chair, they're on the elevation sheet A6 on the west elevation. The main ridge height would be 22.6 and the top, the cupola, 25.0. I think that's his 25. Yeah, 25.0.
Thank you. Didn't think to look at the renderings. All right, well, that concludes the speakers on this item. And then it goes back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Thompson.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Sweeney from the Design Board to come up and give us a synopsis of the discussion that the Design Board had regarding the privacy issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fred Sweeney with the Single Family Design Board. In this specific project, we did look carefully at the window locations on the second floor as proposed. And I believe in our general conversation, we encouraged the architect and, and the applicant to, when they came back to us following your review, that consideration be given to those window locations and a little more information about the cone of view they were actually able to see. So for instance, on the north elevation, at the upper, proposed upper floor height at the northeast corner, there's a window. So one of the things we'll want to see is what can you really see from, from that window? And I know at one point, one of those windows is actually just in a closet. Nevertheless, one of our concerns generally as a board is the issue of privacy between neighbors. But part of your discussion today in general is going to help our board, I think, understand the dilemma that we face when we see these types of projects, where we have an existing home proposing a second story, particularly when they're on a level lot. It's a little easier to adhere to the guidelines, as Mr. Bartlet pointed out a little earlier, when we're dealing with, with a hillside situation. But when we're on a level lot and you propose a new two-story element, regardless of how big it is, it's a new element in the sky. So the general view from almost any vantage point, with the exception of things that can be hidden by trees, becomes a dilemma for the immediate neighbors in the neighborhood. So one of our concerns as a general board and concerns with the second-story proposals in general, it gets down to who gets to have a second floor. And as we've shared with many applicants, our board is not under the purview of allowing or disallowing second floors. I believe that's a little bit more in the point of discussion of your board. So certainly, your discussion today is going to give us a little bit more help and a little more insight about how we approach these. Certainly, the floor area ratio is one consideration. As you note, in this particular application, it's approaching our guideline recommendation of 85%. We get some that are 87, 86, depending on how you do the math. I'm not sure that's the only measure we should be looking at. So certainly, your discussion is going to be very important today as to how do we respond to applicants when they propose a second floor and we have voices from the neighborhood saying, we really don't want a second floor and in some cases, we don't want a second floor, period. And I don't know that our board, as I said, is allowed to make that type of determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. I guess, oh, I should say that we did receive an email from Fay and David Bisno, which was read to us, concerned about the privacy. Barry Nissen from 1520 Shoreline imposed blocks views will create a canon-like effect. Applicant has a large lot, could have added on one-story addition. And then Norman Sorgh at 1530 Shoreline had a great view until previous owner planted what is now a 35-foot hedge. Additional takeaway, more of our view. And then Paula Westbury sent a letter and she is also opposed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Larson.
This isn't, these won't be my total comments, but I want to, I'll begin the discussion by unfortunately saying, and I do mean from the bottom of my heart, we can't say much about private views. It's really too bad, but there's not much we can do in our purview to protect a private view except beseech the, the builder and the architect and the owner of the project to please take those into consideration. And believe me, it's meant a lot to everybody who lives on a hilltop here. And a neighbor can obliterate a view with an eight-foot fence after taking all of the, you know, anybody, anybody's entitled to do that. It's a very tough thing. And even though the city can put caveats on height of landscapes and things, people can allow their landscapes to grow to 16, 20 feet and really, really screw the neighbor. So I have to start out by saying that. That being said, I'll move to privacy. I live in a very small house between two large two-story houses. They can certainly see into my house. If you go over to Victor, excuse me, I'm going to use the block on Victoria Street right behind, right behind IHOP, Victoria, the row of Victorians there along that street. Every one of those houses can see their neighbor. I mean, it's not, it's not, we're not constructed to not see our neighbors in some respects. And we are fortunate that we have a design board that takes that into consideration. My concern is with mass, because this is very large. And I would, you know, my concern, I was on the ABR for many years and I would look at this and I would think, hmm, boy, this is really going to every limit. And if I were sitting on that board, any board on this, I would ask to have a reduction in the mass of the second story. I'm not on those boards and it, could you put up that, go to that slide that has 1434 Shoreline on it, please? I want to speak to that house there, 1434 Shoreline. 1434 Shoreline, I was on the ABR at the time. This house is built completely dominating its lot. Not only that, it's completely concreted in the back. And no matter what we did, this person prevailed over what we wanted. And I think that that's one of the reasons we ended up with the guideline for FAR. This was an extremely difficult project. We couldn't get the size to come down. All we could get was a lowering of the center part, which you can't see. And then there's another master bedroom in the back. It is a tough lot and it's filled. So I'm just using that as an example of a massive structure and part of the reason that we do consider FAR now. You know, we use Shoreline Drive a lot for what we determine, McMansions, FAR. It really is like the, kind of a laboratory in a way. But I do have concerns about the mass and, you know, the architect is wonderful, the clients, I don't know them at all, haven't seen them, but I appreciate the sensitivity about the architecture harkening to a coastal area on the east coast. And I'm, I appreciate the neighbor's point of view about the views we can't protect. And I hate to say that. And also about privacy, which, which we can affect because this is new construction. So I don't quite know what to do here. What I'd love to do is continue it to a point where this could be studied more, have some privacy, you know, view, you know how you do a view corridor, you could do a privacy study or something? I'm not comfortable saying yea or nay on this project at this point. So, but I, but I am concerned about, about the, the size, not the size, the, it's how it's managed. And great design is problem-solving. And so I think, I think it needs to have a little more work on the problem-solving. And, and I appreciate the, the words of the neighbors, but you know, even though you would say, we don't want a second story for our neighbor, you're just as entitled as he is to a second story. So it's hard for us to, or hard for me to say, well, there is no second story here because you yourself could do it someday and maybe you'd like to. So that's one of those, be careful what you ask for because it could affect you down the road. So I, and I had a concern about, I didn't know if this was, this is aside from my comments about this project, but this one photo here, I don't know if that's an enforcement case or not, but I think somebody should check that out with the trucks. Pardon? Oh, okay. Well, I'm going to mention it in this meeting, so please take a look, City of Santa Barbara. And, and those are my initial comments. I may, I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues and I may have more comments coming in the other side. I'm sympathetic about the view, can't do a darn thing, I'm sorry. So that's where you plead with the architect and, and the owners of the project.
Any other commissioners and comments? Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think I alluded to some of my comments in the questioning. I think the applicant is certainly entitled to, you know, add a second floor. And I think given the, the parameters of the existing residents, we would be granting the modifications because it currently extends beyond the current interior lot line setbacks. And I would not have a problem with the CDP, but I think the proposal before us, the second floor configuration, is the most impactful orientation and size that it could be for a house of this square footage. I think it's being exacerbated by the large volume of unused attic in the center of the house. It's spread perpendicular to the neighborhood's view angle to the ocean. And there's still abundant lot area before you get to the bluff retreat line to, I think, reconfigure the second floor, to I think, attempt to share that view, even though it's not a requirement for private views, but to be respectful of the whole Mesa neighborhood above, to share those views toward the ocean and islands and not orient your, your large roof form perpendicular to where you're blocking almost your whole lot width. I think, you know, a second floor could be nestled closer to the big tree on the east and not be a privacy impact for those neighbors as much as it is on the, on the west side. And I just think there's a, a better orientation that has not been explored and I'm just not comfortable, you know, giving the, the concerns of the neighborhood and the, the options that are still out there. That's why I was really curious and I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Sweeney at least expounded on the discussion that started at Single Family Design Board, but I think they're waiting a little bit more for our input, too, so that they can continue that. And I, I think there's certainly a project here. I just don't think this particular proposal is it yet. But I think I could certainly support where they're going with some more refinements. So I hope, you know, that that message maybe can go back to the Single Family Design Board, whether we act on it today or do a continuance, but I'd like to maybe hear from others as well.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I very much appreciate Mr. Sweeney's comments on behalf of Design Review Board. And that key question of who gets a second story, I think, is one to highlight. I feel that I would be remiss if I played judge and jury as to who gets a second story and who does not, because as, as Commissioner Larson, Larson mentioned, you, too, may, may come before the city at some point and, and want for some. the city at some point and want for some improvements to your home that certainly meet your needs, but perhaps when the neighbor proposed them seemed somewhat onerous or objectionable. So with that, however, I also think there is opportunity for refinement here. And I'm thinking of two other projects on Shoreline. One, I think, Mr. Zimmerman, you were also the architect on, and that property has now sold, and it's closer to La Marina. It's a sort of an intimate cottage style, and I believe you came to us for approval of a second story that was over the garage. And the scale, scope of that second story fit very nicely into that property and almost disappeared from view, from public view. So, because I think you shrunk it to the extent that it did not sort of overshadow not only the rest of the house, but really obfuscate views and a sense of privacy for the neighbors. We also approved a project on the very corner of Shoreline and La Marina that personally, I felt, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact address, staff, but, but I'm recalling that the angling of that second story and the square footage of that second story also was more appropriate and was, was very sensitive to the area, to, well, first of all, to the property itself, to the area, and in ensuring that a balance of public views and private views were honored, though, as Commissioner Larson said, private views are not within our purview. But we would respectfully ask that you and the owners consider that very carefully. The good neighbor policy, I think, still applies, even though it's, it's not in writing, so to speak. So I would be happy to see this project in a refinement moving forward where it, I think, was, was more reflective of those, those considerations. I think there's certainly some additional square footage that's appropriate to allow the applicant, but just not in its current form and its current configuration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Mr. Zimmerman. Could you come up to the microphone? In regards to the privacy question to the, for the neighbors to the west, there's really only one second-story window that is of concern, as far as I can see, and that's in the bedroom that's there. Is that window required for code, or could that be eliminated on the west side?
That could be eliminated.
It would seem that, for one thing, to the west, the other, the other window facing the west on the first floor, and then the other one in a closet in that gable. So it would seem like much of the privacy issue for the neighbors to the west would go away if there was no window on the second floor there.
Yeah, those, those could be eliminated.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Campagnella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just continuing on that point, I guess, if, if there is some type of redesign, it could look relative to the scale on the second floor and the view, maybe a little less massing. Maybe a good point to start with is the windows. As you, I don't know if the wardrobe window is a concern when you start looking at the view cones, the bath window, but perhaps that's a good place to start, is to eliminate those angles that could cause a problem for the neighbor, and then design the house to fit where you don't want those openings. In other words, that you still have areas for ingress and egress for fire and things like that. And then replace those with some type of architectural detail rather than actual openings. It did not appear, I'm sorry, the neighbor to the east, I got that right, I don't know if there was a problem with the windows there as well, but both of those do not seem required for fire and access. So I guess, in looking at a redesign, maybe the first thing to do is look where the windows are going on both sides, try to eliminate those so they don't cause a problem, and then design the interior of the house to accommodate flow and also egress in case of an emergency. That would be my suggestion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Larson? I would ask, please, that that Bockus House be shown on the plans, the footprint. It's, if I am calling out the correct house, the missing house, that would be 1539 Shoreline, I believe, which isn't represented on the plans. Oh, I'm sorry.
Forty-one.
Oh, 1541 Shoreline, thank you. I do think that that needs to be represented on the plan and in terms of privacy and view. The other thing I want to say is about windows. You know, windows in a coastal area are very important, because they control moisture. They, you know, it's easy to create a tunnel out of a master bedroom with only one source of light, and it, I think we have to be reasonable in some expectation of windows. Maybe they're up higher, maybe there's something, but they're, they are important in these areas for movement of air. Otherwise, you end up with a mold problem, and that's a very hard thing to cope with. So, so I'm not, I'm personally not saying necessarily no windows, but I am saying placement of windows, that's the design part that solves the problems. This could be done, it just needs to be done with sensitivity. So those, and with that, I'll close my comments. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? From what I've heard my colleagues say, and I, well, I suppose first I should make my comments. I agree with Commissioner Bartlett, there certainly are other answers to providing a second story for the Davenport's. And given that much of the bulk, and that, and that's design, it's just two bulk again masses, as far as I'm concerned, for the, for the base house, it's like a 60% increase in square footage with the addition of the second story. And given that the rooms are very large, the two master bedrooms, and the unusable attic space adds to the bulk, I, I think this should just really be redesigned. And, and I would suggest that perhaps what we should do is, well, Mr. Cotto, a continuance would be the best thing for, with us sending it back to Single Family Design Review Board? I don't, you know, otherwise, I don't have a problem, as Mr. Bartlett said, with the, with the mod and the coastal development permit.
Chair Lodge, so the, the applications that are before today are coastal development permit, which you need to find consistently with the coastal zone, the coastal, the local coastal plan, sorry, the local coastal plan, and the two modifications. Now, and I think, I, I didn't hear a whole lot of discussion about the modifications, and mostly that's a technicality for the existing single story, right? The second story doesn't, it doesn't encroach in any setbacks. And so, so it depends on how comfortable you are with, with direct giving direction to the SFB. You do have the option of continuing it and having it come back. You do also have the option, if you can find it consistent with the coastal, local coastal plan, which we recommend that you do, approve it here and give, give some good direction to the Single Family Design Board and let them handle the design. Because really, I mean, these aren't coastal issues that we're talking about, these are design issues that are more appropriately handled by the SFB, and you can give, and I think you already have given quite a, quite a bit of direction to the SFB, and that could be memorialized in, in the motion and the resolution. So there, I think those are the two options that I see. Mr. Vincent, do you have any, anything else?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, one thing that I've heard from the Commission today is that you've been focusing on your, on the finding of neighborhood compatibility, which is one of the required findings for the coastal development permit. And Commissioner Bartlett made some points regarding primarily the prevailing character and design character in particular of this neighborhood, and as it might relate to the orientation of the second floor, whether it's oriented across the width of the lot or some other alternative. If the Commission was to consider a continuance in order to provide opportunity for the redesign and another presentation to the Single Family Design Board, one thing I would suggest is that the Commission make some further comments regarding the, because right now, the construction is nearly on the interior lot line between the two lots, the currently developed lot and the vacant lot. And if the Commission were interested or willing to entertain modifications regarding that lot line and crossing potentially that lot line with utilizing the lot tie agreement as a way of offering more opportunities or more alternatives to the design team, that, I think those comments would be useful, so that they don't run into problems at the Single Family Design Board, where the Single Family Design Board is being presented designs, and they just don't know what the land use considerations will be coming back here.
Well, let me ask Mr. Sweeney, go to the microphone. From the comments that have been made so far, do you feel that you have sufficient guidance?
I think, Madam Chair, we have sufficient guidance. In a way, I present my apologies, moving on to behalf of our board, certainly myself, because you all just did what we're supposed to do. But I think that's the dilemma, as I mentioned earlier, that the board, our board faces a view to the public mission face, we never quite knew what to do about this second story. So this...
That's the buzzer says you're not on. So this information that you've provided for us today is, is really going to be helpful. I would encourage the applicant and the owner and the architect to perhaps consider particularly Mr. Bartlett's comments in any redesign effort before they come back to us, so that both the applicant and, and our board use our time judiciously. I, I think I'm seeing where staff is coming from. If you could set in place the zoning requirement issues, then I think we, as a board, can carry through on certainly all of your comments, which are all pertinent to getting a solution, which may not be acceptable by all of the neighbors. But again, neighborhood compatibility is our bigger overview and purview. And so I think your guidance has been very helpful. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Excuse me. I just wanted to also add that, that this is a highly pedestrian area. I mean, everybody walks down this street, going to and coming from some of the most delightful parks and recreational areas in our city. And it's heavily used in the way that we encourage people to move, which is by bicycle, by foot power, every way, you know, including cars. And I would want, since we are looking at, we're considering coastal issues, the preservation of public views to be considered. There are other properties along this, along this particular street that we've been very careful about, things like fence height in the front, landscaping in the front, being able to penetrate between the houses, to look at the ocean as you're walking, and, and so forth and so on. So I would consider that, too, in terms of design, preserving pedestrian public view.
Mr. Vincent, you said something about crossing the property line on the other, in a proposed addition to this house. Would that not mean that that lot could then not, this separate lot could not ever be sold as a separate lot?
It couldn't be sold if that design, if the structure remains, in other words, a lot tie agreement would require these two lots to remain in common ownership as long as this design element exists. The property could be redeveloped to respect that property line again, and then at that point, the, the lot tie agreement could be extinguished. But as long as the design requires the two lots to be viewed as one, they could not come out of separate, or they could not come out of common ownership.
Okay, thank you. Well, what is, what is the pleasure of the Commission, given the chance? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to try to further understand Mr. Vincent's suggestion to us in terms of the neighborhood compatibility finding, Policy 5.3 of our local coastal plan, in our overall findings of consistency with the local coastal plan. Mr. Vincent, would you suggest that we not, that we find it incompatible in terms of scale, size, and design than the prevailing character of the established neighborhood to send it back, in sending it back to the Single Family Design Board?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, it's really not my place to be suggesting that we're making recommendations regarding policy. It's your finding to make whether or not this, this proposal is compatible or not. However, I would comment that, that the orientation of the structure can be part of that, that consideration. You look to the, you know, the policies listed on page five of your staff report, and it lists out several elements that, that would be part of the compatibility consideration: scale, size, design, prevailing character of the existing neighborhood. If the Commission finds that the prevailing character of the existing neighborhood is to orient structures in order to share those views, that would be a finding you could make. The size of the structure, the size of the addition, all of those things factor into your finding of whether this, this proposal is compatible with the neighborhood or not.
And then, just secondly, Madam Chair, I think I would have a question for staff. On this same page, under a local coastal plan consistency, and Commissioner Larson has touched on this, in terms of the public views, I see that staff's position is that public views will not be affected, because there are no public view corridors on the project side of Shoreline. Now, must we take into consideration public views from across the street, or, you know, for those who are driving along in the street? This is just the project side of the site.
Basically, the way that the city views, public views, views are basically, the ones that we're most concerned about are views to the ocean and views to the mountains, right? So this one doesn't block any public views of the mountains, because it's on the, it's on the ocean side of the street.
Correct, yes, but the other...
So we're only, so we're only, so then we're thinking about, okay, people driving and walking on Shoreline, how will this affect, how could this affect their views? And it's only the views of the ocean, right?
Correct.
And you can't see the ocean at this location, because a single-story house already goes almost lot line to lot line. So, so you see sky, and you would, I mean, you would, so you can see, this is what you see from the street, and, oh, that's from the roof of the Google car. So it's a little bit above a normal person's height. And so maybe you see a little bit of, of the horizon from there with that. I, I walk, I walk by this neighborhood a lot, and, and if you walk on the sidewalk right there, you can't see anything except the sky.
I'm just looking for opportunity, Danny. You know, I mean, really, some people, some people don't like chain link fencing. I happen to love it, because you can, it blurs property lines, you can see right through it. I think that, that if you can create the opportunity with good design, it's something to offer. You're getting a modification, you know, you're asking for certain things from the city. The city is entitled to ask for a few things back.
Understood. And I guess what I was trying to get at is, when we're talking about a second story, we're talking about how much does the second story obstruct, you know, the, that little piece that you might be able to see from, from here? And obviously, the narrower it is, the more you have of the view corridors on either side, right? So maybe it's, and this is already pulled in a little bit, but maybe it needs to be pulled in even more, is what, I think, I think that's where you're trying to get at, right?
Well, I just, I just want to, you know, I just want to put it in Jim's consciousness and Fred's, because, you know, as you approach projects, this is, these are the kinds of things that, that the board, you know, that, that can enhance the city as well as the neighborhood. Right now, I can't make a finding of neighborhood compatibility for this.
Sure.
I could if there were other things, but there's not enough.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Zimmerman, you wanted to make a comment?
I think viewing the story poles, viewing the existing roof outline from the adjacent properties, and what you see is roof. You don't actually see the, you know, the second floor, you see the roof coming up. And I think that that can be redesigned, so that, that could be minimized. And I'd like to go back to the Design Review Board with a revised drawing on that.
Well, and now that the neighborhood compatibility finding has been pointed out to me, I couldn't support the CDP at this point. So I think then probably the best thing is for us to... So, I think then probably the best thing is for us to...
Madam Chair?
...continue this matter.
I'll make a motion to continue this matter. But what kind of, you know, what kind of continuance do we do? To return to the Single Family Design guideline, would that be indefinite, though? I don't know how we work on that.
We would make that an indefinite continuance, and they would come back here when they're ready. We would renotice the hearing at the time. And so, I would imagine it would be direction, return to the Single Family Design Board with direction, and you can elaborate, but basically to make the second story smaller and try to preserve privacy to the greatest extent feasible, that sort of thing, and then, and then come back, come back when they've done that.
Okay. So, that's my motion, simple.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second, and under further discussion, I think we should elaborate a little on the guidance that we're giving the Single Family Design Board. I think the Planning Commission acknowledges the necessity for the modification request, given the configuration of the existing house, and that the reconsideration of the second-floor massing should take into account more the development pattern of the mesa and the fact that this is a hillside lot. Orient the massing parallel with view angles versus perpendicular, and to reconsider elimination or reduction of the unused excessive attic space, which is adding to the apparent mass bulk and scale of the second floor. And to also, you know, study the privacy issues as have been elaborated by the adjacent neighbors.
Yes, and as I think I indicated, and I want to restate, I'd like to see a reduction in the mass, and not just a lowering of the roof height, and that, it needs to come in. And some, you know, the, the amount of building that fronts on Shoreline Drive, for me, needs to be reduced to make it more compatible with the neighborhood. Any other comments? If not, all those un-favored say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, this item will be continued for and sent back to the Single Family Design Review Board. Okay, that brings us to item four, discussion item, traffic analysis and findings related to the city's growth management program.
Madam Chair, if we'd like to request a short break so we could rearrange the tables into more of a discussion format?
Oh.
So, give us 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay.
Thank you.
We'll be back in here by 2:25.
Growth Management Plan for adoption, hopefully this year. And then, so what we're focusing on today is that traffic, that traffic strategy portion of that. Just a reminder that the general plan, we're implementing the general plan, which has many objectives and goals and strategies. And so when we're thinking about growth management and a strategy for traffic, we're looking at the full set. Just some, picking some of them out and do us, ensure a strong and diverse economy, community benefit housing, focus on selected locations where growth would be. Create an integrative multimodal transportation system, just very big staples of this plan. At the bottom, reduce traffic congestion. So doing all these things at once, and as is very familiar in Santa Barbara, it is a balancing act. And so it is with these objectives, these balanced objectives that we move forward with the proposal today. So for the growth management program, the kind of the three staples we've had are having a priority residential, and that's priority on residential, which is translated in the average unit density program. You've seen a lot of that. We've talked about the non-residential square footage and the allocation that council finally came to. And then there's the traffic management strategy. So that's what we want to focus on today is that third piece. Just a little bit of getting back to kind of where we talked at our last meeting. There's been, the last two decades of traffic growth or managing traffic has been really focused at freeway intersections. They've driven the conversation. At our freeway intersections, we've had significant congestion. And as you know, with that congestion, we've had a little bit of pushback on development. We've had dramatic increases at the same time, the same two decades, in traffic capacity. Supersized, the six interchanges downtown, the crosstown freeway was a really big change. And then various intersection improvements. This is just an outline of the improvements that happened all over the city. The significant increases in traffic capacity that we saw everywhere. You see that crosstown freeway. That crosstown freeway alone took about 2,500 PM peak hour trips out of the downtown grid. As a matter of fact, one of the things we were proposing, a new interchange at Castillo, and when the crosstown freeway went through, we didn't need it anymore because the traffic is just gone in the downtown. It's now all on the freeway. The Creo corridor, you see the supersizing of the interchanges. Upper State Street did a lot of work on Upper State Street. The next two decades are going to be similar in that we're going to have the same rate of growth. We're actually predicting the same amount of traffic PM peak hour trips as we grew in the last two decades for the next two decades. Same rate of growth. And then, but the big, here's the big switch is for the next two decades, we're not going to see that increase in capacity. We don't have the room to supersize interchanges anymore. They don't get any more super than they are now. The roads leading to those interchanges are a small part of the grid. You think of the Mission Corridor, even if you, council made a decision, I think it was about 12 years ago now, to not supersize that particular interchange because the road was just so small to get there and the increase wasn't that big. And so that's the kind of thing we're dealing with the next two decades is we're not going to have this increase in capacity that we had in the past. So while we grow, we're not going to have the room to grow. And so in the model, it showed that, hey, these are the impacted intersections. If you take the same amount of growth you did over the last two decades and you put it for the next, and then you don't increase traffic capacity, it turns out you're going to have a lot of your intersections functioning less than you want them to. The traffic development, what we've done with land development in the past, the traffic analysis, as you've seen it, you've been very familiar with it. Any traffic that's added to an impacted intersection is not okay. And then as some of the people in the room, Scott Scheller, who is here, very proficient with this following of the five trips, to see if you will be able to have a non-residential development even go through. And that was the level. The way that worked is you'd have a subject site, this one's just an example on the Creo corridor. And then we would see what's your trip generation rate? And if you could follow, if you could find traffic coming to that impacted intersection, then basically we said, hey, you're not developing. If that was residential, you'd have to go through a very expensive environmental review impact report, and then you'd have to look for overriding considerations at the council. That was the old process. Now, what we see, and these are the impacted intersections, really doesn't matter, what we found in the model, it really doesn't matter where you're developing the city. Because we're not increasing in traffic capacity, it really doesn't, we don't have to play that, the game of following trips. We know that if you're adding trips to the PM peak hour, they're going to hit an impacted intersection. It's just more surety. We don't have that compensation of added capacity. So that, there becomes our dilemma for the future. Plan Santa Barbara has predicted the 21 impacted intersections. It really doesn't, there's already right now, there's 13, and they're pretty spread out. What happens in fact is if you look at the, these intersections, is you'll notice there is already an impacted intersection at every interchange, except now there's two, in the future, there's two or there's three. In other words, they're in the same locations, it's just it kind of spreads to more intersections within that location. Very few physical possible improvements that we could do. We have, the EIR did identify a number of small intersection tweaks that we are planning on doing. But essentially, all projects with new square footage contribute to an impact in the future. So this becomes a dilemma for us. Because if you look at the existing development plan ordinance, it has this finding up here that the proposed development will not have a significant unmitigated adverse impact on the city's traffic. Well, this finding with new development cannot be made anymore. So that means that just begs the obvious question, what are you going to do? What is going to be the new way of doing things? The general plan direction clearly says we're going to continue with incremental growth. That's not going to stop. In fact, it says, continue with the same growth you've had in the past 20 years, do that again. It says that the traffic impacts are anticipated. We get it. The council said, okay, I get it, you're going to have more traffic impacts. We don't want to stifle the economy, we want to continue to grow. So we, they, they went ahead and overrode those impacts with an understanding that EIR, they overrode the impacts. At the same time, the council also left in the goals to decrease congestion. So again, it's that tension. And how do we grow? You want to decrease congestion, but then you're allowing congestion to increase. You know, how do we, how do we work that out at the end of the day? And then also built into this plan is an adaptive management program, which as we march down the road with incremental times during the 20-year period, checking back in to see how that traffic congestion is moving in, with the possibility of implementing some of the mitigation measures that are identified in the EIR. So here's the question, and this is what we need to tackle today, is how do we now address individual land development traffic impacts? What's our new strategy? Well, the strategy that staff came up with, first thing is we thought, let's just retain the current traffic thresholds. Last time we tried to change the traffic thresholds, pretty much lucky to still be here, have jobs. Couple blowups at Planning Commission, what were you thinking? Okay, never had that thought again, so we didn't. Support the general plan objectives. The traffic management strategy, as we said in the beginning, it needs to support all the objectives. We're not just looking at one, we're looking at all of them. So if they can, if they can help other objectives, we want to do that. And then focus new non-residential square footage and residential in the core to minimize the traffic impacts. This was one of the kind of the things about the model that found out, that was so unique about Santa Barbara, and I think many of you had been saying that for years, that the ITE numbers just don't do it for us. Just because everywhere else in America is that number for that retail shop, doesn't mean we are, and it turns out we are true. That's true, except the difference is that when you put the, it's very different when you put a land use in the downtown versus Upper State Street or out of the downtown. And as it turns out, our model shows that you generate about half the traffic, developments generate about half the traffic if they're placed in the downtown versus in the outline areas. So that, you know, that really gives you a strategy lever right there. If you're going to produce another 1.35 million square feet of non-residential, then logically you put more in the core, you're going to generate less traffic overall at the end of the day. So that was incorporated into our strategy. And again, here's the general plan objectives, they just fit in that we're looking at all of them with our strategy. So the proposal is to allow cumulative impacts in most locations. This is, this is a radical departure from where we were before, because remember, any cumulative impact before, particularly to a non-residential development, would say, you're not going to do it. So we're choosing to allow those in most locations. And then to develop a tiered approach to minimize traffic impacts. In other words, we're going to allow them to occur. We feel like if you look at the breadth, the breadth of the plan objectives, yes, the council's saying override those traffic impacts, but at the same time, minimize them to the extent you can. And so we want to minimize those, establish development areas and focus development downtown. And then the other thing is, and you know, we all know this, I know this maybe more than others, just because I have to say no to developments so often in the past 20 years, we would also like to make the development review process smoother, more certainty. If, you know, one of the big things with residential is, you know that maybe that all of our policies fit with that housing development, we want that housing development, but you have to go through a very expensive environmental impact report to get to that, to that development. And then you're kind of confusing everybody, because on the one hand, we're saying we want the development, but there's a traffic impact, and then the council's left kind of weighing these issues and having to do the overriding considerations. So one of the things we are looking at is how do we make the system better for developers in terms of anticipating certainty, knowing what to expect? In the model area, so here's, so getting into our tiered approach and getting into our proposal, just to get background on the model, these were the zones that the model came up with. In zone one, you have the least amount of traffic generation per, for every square foot you build. Zone two, and which is the grid area, is not too different, not too much higher. It's when you get to areas three and four where the trip generation really increased. A lot more remote, less density, a lot more walking to get between places. The pedestrian facility is not as attractive. And so what we did is we took this map, this traffic, these traffic model zones, and we combined them. You see the two colors, we're just saying, hey, zones one and two, that's the core, that's the downtown. And everything else are outline areas. And we, and getting to this next map, which is, this is our framework for the, for our proposal, is that there would be, the downtown would be treated one way, and then the outline areas would have, would be specific development areas. The Mesa, Upper State Street, Riviera, and Coast Village Road would all have, they'll all be separate development areas, with the understanding that they generate traffic in different ways in each area. And so on the summary of our proposal for traffic, for cumulative traffic impacts, it would be residential, citywide, yes. We're saying yes to, you have a cumulative impact, what we'll do is we'd apply that project and say that is, that applies to the EIR we did, where the council overrode those impacts. Non-residential downtown, same thing, yes. Non-residential in the outline areas, yes to most. So this, this is, this actually is a real landmark shift for us to say now, whereas before, we said no to everywhere here, we said no, in the case of residential, no, but you can with overriding considerations. This is, represents a real shift in our thinking that now we're going to accept cumulative traffic impacts. And I'll just show you the detail. This is for residential in the downtown. Again, you needed overriding considerations. Now it's yes across the board, and we would say that your project is, applies to the EIR and anticipates that impact. In the outline areas, same thing, same story. So residential across the board, saying yes. With commercial in the downtown, before, if you look at that center column, we're trying to compare what we, what we do today versus what we're proposing. For commercial and cumulative, you can see we're moving to all yes. So before, we didn't allow a small addition with a cumulative impact, or vacant property, transfer of development, economic development. We had many economic development EIRs in the last 20 years. We're saying, you have a cumulative impact, we say yes. We just say yes, we apply, we apply that development, it says yes, it's applicable to the EIR, and it qualifies for the overriding considerations the council has already granted. In the outline areas, it's still a lot of yeses, but it's a little bit different. Saying yes to the first two, minor additions, we said yes before, say yes again. No to the small addition, so we're keeping that. But for vacant parcels, we're saying if you can, you can develop that .25 FAR on a vacant parcel, yes. And then something, and this is, this is kind of the, one of the nuances of the plan that we feel would really make it a lot more flexible for development, and yet still control traffic. And that is, if you look at the bottom row, transfer with, within traffic area, beginning in 2008. So 2008, just so you know, is the benchmark for our transport, our traffic study. That's all our numbers were originated in 2008. So every development that was on the ground in 2008 was included in that study. What we're saying is that if you go back to these, these areas, Mesa, Upper State, Riviera, Coast Village Road is, let's say, Upper State Street, you have square footage that you, you would like to transfer one, with one site to another. What we're saying is that the traffic that generates at the, the sending site can move with the, move with the site itself, with the project to the next place. So in essence, what we're saying is all the square footage within those, those four areas, the outline areas as we call them, they can retain their square footage. You can move the clay around all you want, the clay is still going to have the same amount of traffic. So go ahead and have the flexibility of moving it around. Where we think that this is, has value, is kind of harkening back to the decision we made in, in 89 with the first, the last general plan, which was really clamping down on non-residential square footage. And really forcing developers to get creative with existing buildings that were long out of use, and reuse those buildings, reuse that square footage. And wow, we really had a lot of successes in the last 20 years with that approach. We think that this approach could also work, where developers have to get creative, they can now build a lot more than they could, but they have to find the clay within, within the area and go to other sites that aren't as utilized and team up. And we think that that'll be successful. So that's the cumulative impact, and really that's the big difference. If you look at project-specific traffic impacts, there's, there's not a lot of change. We're saying residential, yes with override, it'd be the same as it was before. Now, a project-specific impact, we really haven't had a lot of those in the past 20 years. It's very unusual to get a project that's big enough to have a project impact, it does specific impact, it can happen. But there's really, really not a lot of change. I'll just go, I'll just go through these really quickly. So residential, now, so the big difference is that right with the, in the outline areas, we're saying with market ownership, before it was allowed, yes with overriding, we're suggesting that we just say no to that altogether. And the reason we're suggesting that is because that was one of the things that people said in the general plan process that was the least attractive residential option. And since, and since whatever development we place in these areas, we're going to have to incur the traffic impacts of it, we're going to have to live with the traffic impacts. We felt that developing market rate ownership housing in the Outer State Street area is not as, except according to zoning, is not, is attractive for this plan. And then for downtown, project-specific, vacant is the one we turned around, so that you actually could develop a vacant parcel at .25 FAR. And then of course, you're still able to transfer. So within the downtown, you could actually transfer your square footage, and that would be, again, that's the moving of the clay that has, its traffic that it generates now from one site would move to the other. And then in the outline areas, there really isn't, isn't much change, except for vacant, yes with overriding considerations. And community priority, you could always, already do that. The other thing we did since we last met with you, is we had-
Excuse me, Rob. On that previous slide, it says market ownership, yes with overriding, allowed now, and allowed in the future, it also says yes with overriding.
That was downtown. So if you turn over to the next one, you'll look at the, they're different for the outline development areas, which would be Mesa, Upper State Street, Riviera, and Coast Village Road.
I'm sorry, Rob, Madam Chair. The market ownership means something produced not within the AUD, because there could be market within the AUD, that would be considered okay under the AUD program.
Yes, I think we should look at the table rather than the slide that just states market, because then you see it has all the housing types, and AUD is listed as yes, as well as a allowance for single-family and duplex. So this would be, within the AUD, that is also market housing. So that line, the one that says market, no, should probably say base density condominiums.
Like the 12 to 18?
Right, right.
That's what we're talking about here.
Right.
So the other thing that happened since we last met is, we really wanted to talk more with long-term stakeholders, people that are involved in this process that we work with all the time. This would be architects, land event lawyers, permiters, people who are handling the permits and getting development rights. And so we met with two different groups, and the goals that we had were to create, again, better understanding, what is staff proposing? We wanted to get input, is there something we're missing that we should change? And really, we want to create a better conversation here. And it was really great to see some of the people here, Trish Allen, Lisa Plowman here, and Steve Leiter, and some people who are in our focus group. Scott was also a part of that. And so it's great to see them here, and we'll hope that they'll, they'll contribute and talk to, about this, these issues as others do too. Here's what we found from them, here's the input that we got. Really, really good stuff. And first one was the boundaries, you know, anticipating those boundaries, the things you'd never think of. And someone brought up that the De La Vina corridor is cut in half, the commercial corridor is cut in half, it's in both zones. It's in, in the development area downtown, and it's also in the development area in the Outer State Street, Upper State Street area. So we adjusted that boundary so that, so that, and I can show that to you, I'll just get back real quick. We adjusted that boundary, you can see right here, where we adjusted the, the De La Vina commercial down to constant, so the entire commercial area is in one development area, so that we don't have that splitting. We thought that was a really good comment.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Just a question on mapping in general. I know when we were looking at all the general plan maps, we tried to not run the lines down the center of the street. And I'm assuming you're taking the same philosophy, you have a building on one side of the street and then one on the other side, they're both contributing traffic to the same street. So hopefully you've adjusted the mapping to treat opposite parcels the same?
That's what we're telling our mapper, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've had that conversation several times, we're on the same page.
Okay.
So a couple of other things they mentioned that were really helpful is use policy language versus SEQA. The finding that we have now is a SEQA finding, have, you know, find that there's no traffic impacts. What we've tried to do is pull away from SEQA, have SEQA be one process and have the policy stand alone. And so what we're doing, and the other thing that's positive about that is we want to use the EIR that we've done, to the extent we can, so that people don't have to pay for that same EIR over and over and over again, save the developer, the cost, and us the time and work. And so we, what we're, this policy language, it would be envisioned that as we accept developments, that they would be accepted as a part of the plan, and therefore the EIR and the decision the council made would be applied to it. So that, that was a really helpful comment for us, and we're really trying to honor that. Someone wanted to make sure that we allow transfers from the outline areas to the downtown. In other words, if you demoed a building in an outlined area and someone wanted to purchase that square footage, but they were located downtown, couldn't we do that? And we said, absolutely. It's okay to, for the square footage to get smaller in traffic, just don't take square footage downtown that's generating less and move it upstream where it's generating more. So transfer okay within area, and transfer okay to take an outline area and then move it downtown.
And that includes the traffic, not just the square footage.
And that includes the traffic. Good clarification. There was a lot of interest-
Madam Chair, just, it includes the traffic, but most likely, I'm sorry. Thank you. You would take the traffic, but most likely the impact would be less, as you mentioned before.
That's correct.
Because downtown, if I look at the chart 20 years out, the queuing that would occur on some of these intersections, maybe to get to the outline areas, now you would be not having to go through that. So you're not only taking the traffic, but the traffic that does flow is more efficient-
That's right.
-moving through the system.
That's a good point. So the other thing they wanted us to, everyone was, everyone's really interested in how does this really test out? So we looked at a lot of projects that we've already done, in other words, the ones that have just been approved recently, how would they fare in, in the, in this new environment? And with, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of a challenging question, because there's a lot of projects that aren't in the existing project list because they're, they're back on my floor, where Steve Foley said, no, you can't have that development. There's a lot more on Steve's floor that would now be yes, that we don't even have in the system. But when we did look back at projects, there are projects that wouldn't be able to be done, and they're mainly in the outlining areas. They wouldn't be able to be done unless the developer got creative and coordinated and got some square footage. Incidentally, Betty and I were looking, I think John was also involved in finding some, what is the square footage available since 2008 in some of these areas? You know, that's a, that's a kind of an important question. And we found about 8,000 square feet available right now in Upper State Street. So that's kind of good news for the developer, there's, you know, there's somewhere you could, where you could purchase 8,000, say if you wanted a 5,000 square foot building in addition to your minor addition on a vacant parcel, and you, you wanted to get that, it's available, and you could, and you could develop that. And we would say that is a part of the plan, and that's anticipated in the, in the impacts that council has overridden. So we do feel like this plan does have the flexibility. It does say no to a lot of the things, some of the things that we were doing before, but it offers a lot more territory than we've ever had in terms of flexibility and moving the clay around, as I was saying. Easy to understand transfers. We were asked to be very clear and have a very good, good mechanisms for these transfers. Where's the pot? How much is available? Which property? So that, so it's very easy for a developer to come in and use it. And we get that, we haven't developed that yet, but we think that that's a good comment. We want it to be user-friendly for us too, and for the public and developers specifically to understand it and know how to use it. So we'd make that our goal. And then finally, allow consideration of every project on its merits. That was a comment we got because, you know, we haven't allowed for overriding considerations for, for non-residential developments, and now we are, in fact, applying the council's decision to many, so you won't, it won't even get on the radar. They were saying, well, why not just do that for everywhere in the city? Even though it's on an Upper State Street, even though you have the traffic impact, go, why not just go through the process of having an EIR, a separate EIR, and then, and then the council, the Planning Commission and the council can weigh the merits of the project against the traffic that would be generated? You know, and that's a completely legitimate comment, and I could understand, you know, why people were imagining a project that, that won't happen because of these rules. We just feel like what we- We just feel like what we've done is applied all the general plan objectives. We're, it's this, again, it's this tension of traffic, allowing the traffic impact but decreasing traffic at the same time, allowing for economic development. We just thought that that went too far for us, that there's going to be real consequences to these traffic impacts on Upper State Street. Even, you know, if you add the minor additions, if everyone's doing a minor addition, the minor additions over time will add up to lost time at signals for people. And we just felt like that was crossing a line to, to go there. But that, but that does lead us to your discussion, which is maybe, maybe you would entertain that. And so we want to have, we're hoping to have a really healthy discussion in the, in the public comment included so that we can get really solid direction from you on where, how we're going to land on this. The next product we give you would be a fully-developed system of how it would work in the form of an ordinance. And so we're listening to this conversation to make sure that we do it the right way and how you want it crafted.
Okay. Any questions, comments now from the commissioners? And I see some speaker forms coming up. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Larson. On the general plan direction slide, which is on page seven of our packet, on developing the AMP, it's the bottom slide, last item, traffic mitigation, which becomes very important. But I, I, as I'm listening to this, what is running in the back of my mind through this whole scenario, and I think I've spoken about it before, but I'm going to speak to it again, is the outlying areas that we talk about, but not necessarily on the corridors. As we are, we want people to be able to still move around the city, we have got to do something and I don't know, it, it should be in a policy somewhere where we continuously try and, and ultimately successfully upgrade public transportation in areas that are out there because we're going to create a very, in the sake of housing, congested area with, you know, once, once we throw away, okay, traffic impacts don't work. But, but I think we can't lose the, the, we have to have the foresight to see that the Mesa, the Riviera, all the, all the beige areas still need to have some form of collection to move people downtown if you want cars out of the core and the ultimate goal. So I don't want to get, have that get lost in the discussion about, and maybe it's not appropriate for today, but I need to, I want to make sure it stays on the table, that we need to not only focus on the develop, the, the proposed development, developmental areas, but also to lessen the impacts to everyone else in the city by providing stronger public transportation.
I think it's, I think you bring up a very excellent point, Commissioner Larson. And it, and it's a good point for, time for me to interject, just to remind us about what the plan, because we did, we did, we analyzed all that. And it really, the, the point you bring up is really why, is really why we're bringing this strategy before you to minimize traffic impacts in Upper State Street and other, those other outline areas. And that is because the mitigation measures that you pointed out that were developed in, in the EIR, they showed that even if we expended exorbitant amounts of money on transit and other things, they wouldn't make a lot of difference for people and their cars. And so, you know, that's kind of where we're in a box. We don't, we have, we did, there are some improvements that were identified, some minor tweaks at intersections, but at the end of the day, to do, to have any effect in those areas, even at great expense, is going to be very minimal, not really felt by someone who's driving. Much different story downtown. So we want to, and that's why, and that's another reason why we're not emphasizing the traffic mitigation program. It's very important, but the, if you'll recall, the, the real heavy hitter, 80% of the mitigation was, the leverage that we have in decreasing traffic congestion and mainly just in the downtown and the interchanges attached to downtown was responsible, the, the thing that did it was the price parking. And as we know, that's extremely controversial. And so the city may not ever want to do that step, which is a legitimate decision. So we wanted, we wanted to bring this program to you, kind of not having to depend on the traffic mitigation, but we are going to talk a lot about it. We are gonna, we are, just to give you a preview, we want to have every development contribute to mitigation. We want to do those little fixes at the intersection, so we're going to have a program. We just don't want this proposal to hinge on it.
Oh, I understand, I understand that. I just didn't want to have it, I didn't want to have it go away when I go away. So, because that's going to happen before this discussion's finished down the road and, and, you know, I'm starting to think that way. The other thing that I think is very important is the, an adaptive management program, AMP, as, as we have talked about, reviewing the actions policy-wise that we've taken and their effect on the city, periodically reviewing. And I, I think that that's a very important cachet to, to keep in the, in the ultimate plan as we review everything. We still need to look at that, maybe run that model. I think I said this before, you know, we, we, we do pay 10 grand to press that accelerator on that model, but, but that's what we have it for. I mean, we didn't get it to not use it, we got it to use it when we need to, or maybe a developer still might need to. But I wouldn't, I just wouldn't throw it out. You know, I just think we need to keep, keep our eye on all of it.
Yes, Commissioner Bartlet?
One quick question. How will this sort of change in policy direction affect future annexations, given that all the land to be annexed is in the outline area where we want the least amount of growth because of the traffic impacts?
Ms. Wees?
I'd have to look more closely at the last time we did a comprehensive review of the outlying areas for annexation, but primarily that is in residential land use and most of those areas are also lower-density, single-family areas. So I'm not sure that it's going to be a significant conflict or problem. The practice we've applied, again, these last 20 years is when a property becomes annexed to the city, it is subject to the city's regulation. So you apply the existing square footage as existing, but then if it's a commercial development, they, we look at the development potential under the growth management categories. And then in terms of residential, again, which is really what we more frequently see, I know we recently saw an annexation at Cieno Guitas, but that is a, that's a rare non-residential commercial, non-residential annexation. Most of them in the Upper State Street Northside areas are residential. The Las Pecitas Valley, there is the one commercial center. We're, we're not really in an active annexation program, however, if you look at the city's general annexation policy, it really is at the request of property owners. So you're right, there could be a potential conflict-
Would those recent annexations have been precluded under this policy direction, though, that's being discussed?
Well, I'm not sure which annexations, but-
Well, like Cieno Guitas, where you're adding a lot of non-residential footage.
Right. The, in the Northside area, we've certainly seen the residential annexations that Trudy Carey's brought forward. Those would be consistent with this program. I don't see that as a conflict. We did talk about the Foothill Triangle as really a current to past practice model and this new program would be difficult for that location, the scale of that development if it were not a community priority type of use. But again, that, isn't that different than what they went through? As they, they went to the city council with a special allocation of square footage, they were seeking a development partner that made sense for the community. They came in under economic development rather than community priority. However, health services could also be considered a community priority. So I'm not sure that it would be precluded per se. But we don't have a lot of those pending annexations with non-residential development. So I think it's more of a hypothetical or a study that we'd have to flush out whether or not there is a conflict.
I just saw all the little islands on the map is what brought it to my attention.
And those islands are predominantly residential, yes.
Anyone else before we take public comment? If not, the first speaker will be Lisa Plowman and she will be followed by Scott Schell.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
I just have a couple of comments today about the proposal in front of you. One of them is, is the item that Rob took a fair amount of time talking about and that has to do with overriding considerations and whether or not a decision-making body should be able to have overriding considerations available to them for any project in the city. And the city is unusual in the sense that over the years it had a policy that said you could not override for project-specific impacts or cumulative impacts for non-residential development pretty much anywhere in the city. And that's unusual. Other jurisdictions don't tie their hands that way or future decision-makers' hands that way. They take the projects on a case-by-case basis. They do environmental review, determine whether or not thresholds have been tripped. They state what the impacts are. Decision-makers look at the project, they weigh the project against the impacts and they decide whether or not the project has enough value to the community to be able to override those impacts. And so my suggestion is that you don't tie your hands and the hands of future councils and future planning commissions, that you allow them the ability to weigh the merits of the project against the impacts that are generated by that project. And that's a, that's a shift for the city. That would be a big shift. You're starting to make that shift in this proposal, but my view as a planner is that that should go all the way and that environmental review and impacts are about information, not about policy. Policy is a separate thing from environmental impact. So I'm suggesting that perhaps you guys take that, the next step, and remove that element from this program altogether. One of the other concerns we had, as it specifically relates to the inability to override for impacts for commercial square footage outside the downtown, is some of these neighborhood areas, like the Mesa, for instance. There are certain projects up there that were built recently, it was the Giovanni's. That's not a project that would be able to happen today, but that was a really good thing for the Mesa neighborhood. I live on the west side and I use that neighborhood all the time. And there are some properties there that might want to redevelop and so our concern is that their 1,000 square feet isn't going to allow some of that redevelopment and those services actually could benefit that neighborhood and prevent them from having to drive downtown for services that they might otherwise get in their neighborhoods. One of the other thoughts we had as we discussed this was something like the Sumita Gardens on Upper State Street. There's a property that virtually has almost no square footage on it except for a couple of shacks. And unless they can afford to buy square footage, they probably won't be able to develop that site with anything that is economically viable unless they do residential. And that's a question you have to ask yourself, is that what you want to happen on Upper State or would you like, maybe it's a 2,500-square-foot commercial project with some residential units above? But right now, that's not something that would be able to happen. I think the other project that we talked about was the Turk Haslan Nursery that you recently approved on Coast Village Road. That's a project that would not be able to happen at this point because it's in Zone 3 and it had more commercial square footage than you would be allowed. I think, I don't know how many, Scott, how, do you know how big it was? It was more than 1,000 square feet. So we just ask you to consider those, those facts and if you eliminated the restriction to make overriding considerations, you would eliminate that problem. And future decision-makers would be able to approve projects that had enough merit for the community in those outer zones. Thanks very much.
Scott Schell will be followed by Steve Leidner.
I have to admit, Lisa took about three-quarters of what I was going to say. She should have called me first. Well, we had all got together on a focus group and, and Rob was great and he led us through some of this presentation before and I really appreciate staff getting us all involved, so that was really good. Thanks, Rob. As Rob said, this plan is definitely getting more flexible and I think it could probably still be a little bit more flexible. And I sort of echo what Lisa had said, you know, there are certain limitations in those outlying zones which basically make it even more of a just-say-no program. If you come in with 1,001 foot, it's no. It's on Steve's floor and you're back to the drawing board. You got to go find somebody who can sell you that one extra foot. So I would agree with Lisa and, and say that there should be a way built into this plan to give the future decision-makers more flexibility. This is a 20-year deal and there should be people in the future that say, that gas station or that Starbucks or that shop is not what we're doing anymore and we want to do something more than add just 1,000 square feet to that shelf. So Giovanni's is a perfect example. It was an old gas station site that they added 3,000 square feet to and now it's a neighborhood magnet that's got apartments above. I don't think that could have happened without that extra residential or retail square footage. There's got to be some financial bang for the buck to be able to afford to do these things, so. So we heard about Turk Haslan, the Giovanni's. Some of the other sites that, you know, just came to mind as I drove here today on the Upper State Street corridor, there's the Mackenzie Market that's just been sitting there for a while. Who knows what goes on behind closed doors there, but sooner or later, something is going to happen with that. It's going to be a fairly limited thing. The 7-Eleven parcel's huge, it's got this little 7-Eleven on it and maybe a flower shop. So those are all going to be challenging redevelopment sites in the Upper State Street area with this new plan unless you have the money to go buy the square footage. So what are some options for changes? I wrote some things down this morning. So more flexibility for the decision-makers, we've heard that. You know, where do we get the 1,000 number? That's, that's kind of from Measure E. Why not the minor addition? What about 3,000? What about 5,000? Where do you draw the line at choosing how much square footage should get you into an overriding consideration for free versus an automatic denial? So I think there should be some room for thought as to where that line is. And as Lisa kind of pointed out a little, in our focus groups, we had talked about, isn't there types of uses that could be allowed in some of the neighborhoods that are really more residential and neighborhood-serving? We're, we're promoting more residences in the Mesa and Coast Village and in the Upper State Street, but we're saying we're freezing the commercial. We're, we're allowing 1,000 square feet and just moving clay. And, you know, is that really going to be the balance that we're going to need over the next 20 years? And so we also thought there could be a category that said, you know, certain types of uses may have a different treatment because they do reduce traffic in that neighborhood. They aren't regional generators. They, they, they let me buy my milk on the way home. One of the other things I noticed and it came to mind is the project-specific impact threshold for non-residential development, the downtown core. There's a big, hard matrix to follow, but I was, I was listening intently. There are, I have a, a little bit of an issue with that just because I think it could affect some redevelopment. The one that really comes to mind is the Garden Street corridor from the freeway to the waterfront. If you've been down there, you know, it's pretty much a rock pile. And there have been plans to do many things there in the past to, to make that corridor and that scenic gateway to the beach nicer. And I can tell you that even a small amount of development there, because of its proximity to the Garden Interchange, is, is likely to have a project-specific impact, particularly when you look at all the land in place. So I think that would be another policy that I would reconsider for the downtown because it is going to limit development next to those freeway nodes that are going to be impacted. So anything that's close to the freeway, still going to have a pretty good shot at being impacted on a project-specific level and then denied under these rules. So my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schell. Excuse me, Mr. Schell, I have a question. I wasn't clear, were you suggesting that there were some residential areas in the outlying areas that should allow commercial uses?
No, what I was just pointing out is that under Plan Santa Barbara, we can anticipate continued residential growth in the outlying areas. There's still a promotion of residential development within the Mesa, Upper State Street areas. And so as the, as the areas grow, and particularly the Mesa, you'd be, I would begin to see an imbalance in the retail service provided in the Mesa and continued residential growth. I think it's going to be imbalanced where actually the policy is going to work in reverse in terms of affecting reductions in traffic congestion because the more people you put on the Mesa with limited retail, the more they're going to drive down the hill to shop. So it was about neighborhood balance.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Le, is it Leider?
Leider.
Mr. Leider?
Yeah. My name is Steve Leider. I'm a commercial realist-
I'm a commercial real estate broker here in town with Leon Associates. And I represent three property owners on the Upper State Street area. One of them in particular is 351 Hitchcock, the second half of the old Mel Clayton Ford dealership. 2.61 acres. When the property was acquired back in '07, the city recognized for Measure E purposes about 28,000 feet, which is primarily the existing showroom of the Lexus dealership. In 2008, the world stopped. The way car dealers look at Santa Barbara, unfortunately, has changed radically. I have pursued for about four years a replacement tenant for that space. The city has encouraged me to go forward, that they would allow for economic development 10,000 or 15,000 feet to build a new showroom, because the existing service bays are not considered square footage. Unfortunately, Santa Barbara's not a big thriving area, and the cost of capital for a dealer to invest and build that showroom and remodel the service area does not support the return on capital. In 2080, well, in 1989, when Measure E was adopted, we weren't buying cars off the internet. Santa Barbara, unfortunately, does not experience a high volume of car sales in town. Some of the existing dealers do fine, but it's only because their economic basis is pretty low. So, when this Plan Santa Barbara came to fruition, if we can't land a car dealership, what's our alternative? The zoning on the property is E3SDPD, which allows three units, three single units to an acre. Okay? And it's a planned development. So, the permitted uses currently are a bank, church, hospital, hotel, office, parking lot, recreational vehicle, restaurant, and some schools. The challenge that we have, that we fall through the cracks on Plan Santa Barbara, is the zoning doesn't, the trip generation for any of those uses I just mentioned trigger an overriding, would not be permitted under Plan Santa Barbara. The hotel is a valuable use, that I can assure you. There's a lot of interest in putting a hotel there. But we couldn't do that, because there's, under Plan Santa Barbara, we don't have the rooms. There is a potential plan, the Sandpiper, the Sandman Hotel being converted to housing. We don't know when that's going to happen, and whether that ever will happen. How does that, we've got to wait around. If I'm not able to get a car dealer and not able to do a hotel, what's the alternative use? Okay? We discussed the AUD housing, market-rate housing. That would work with the higher density of about 25 or 27 units per acre. But the E3 zoning doesn't permit that. So, the flexibility that my predecessors, speakers, have talked about is really in need at that location. The other complication is because the city recognizes the property is not vacant land, but because it has about 1,400 feet of bathrooms and a little bit of office, it can't apply the 1.25 land ratio. So, we've got to now, you know, it's about 2,400 feet on 113,000 feet of dirt. So, conversely, you go over to the little triangle next to the Chevy dealership. Because that was vacant, we can build 20,000 feet on that space. So, what I'm trying to demonstrate here is that there needs to be some flexibility and some interpretation for instances like that. There's, in the upper, in Area 4, there's at least five locations that fall into that category. So, I would urge you to provide staff with the tools to kind of fix it. I mean, Danny and I have gone back and forth on this, and we're kind of in a box. We can't get out of the box, because one alternative versus the other alternative. And what really didn't go into the thinking here is the plan, is the obsolescence of properties. 20 years ago, when Measure E was adopted, you weren't buying cars off the internet. You know, there's a lot of, the internet has changed the world. There's a lot of bricks and mortar that won't be built because of that. But we don't have the flexibility to create this. The hotel is a viable option. We've been approached by housing people, senior housing people, who want to do like a Maravilla. But we're kind of in a box. And when this came up, we, you know, we don't know where we're going to go. So, I'd ask you to consider that. It has significant impacts on this property and the city as well.
Thank you very much. Tricia Allen, the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and planning commissioners. I think I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record, so I'm going to keep it pretty quick. I really appreciate what Steve had to say, because that's actually a real-life scenario and something that we've been thinking about. And I've been approached by other folks that are interested in that property, but it is very limiting, the property on Hitchcock that he was referring to. Lisa pretty much encapsulated where a lot of us are at in terms of the flexibility with the outlying areas. And, you know, staff's listening, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. And I just wanted to say, I attended the hearing back in June when this was first introduced to the commission. And I'm kind of feeling like, some of the things that we now understand and have taken some more time and looked at it were also aligned with what some of the commissioners said back in June in terms of, you know, tying hands, letting folks come together, propose a project, let an analysis happen, you know, consider economic development in terms of a project that can be overridden. We don't know what these areas 15 years from now may be needing, what kind of additional services. And that includes the outlying areas that would be further restricted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public speakers on this item. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm trying to mentally perform triage on all this information, and I appreciate the comments from the public, especially those who, stakeholders in this discussion with staff and the city in general, I myself am wrestling with how we create tools that have longevity and sustainability and flexibility, because this example of obsolescence of properties is something that one can't entirely predict. We know what happens. We know that, you know, as our society evolves, uses of land will evolve. And so, I'm not sure how to kind of toss this back to staff to say, "Help me understand your thinking, what you've proposed, in trying to forge this balance between putting some tools in place, but not tying your hands or decision-makers' hands and the community's opportunities to realize the best for our community as what we can and cannot predict comes to the fore?" Because I think that's part of our, that's part of our greatest challenge. So, I would appreciate your thoughts on that.
I think the best thing to understand before we get into the how, what we do if we do something, is to understand, like, for instance, the project example that Steve Leider brought up. The staff proposal today, the thing that you're talking about, doesn't change the circumstances for that property. In other words, under today's rules, all the same issues exist. The, maybe a better way to say this is, the thing we're proposing right now is not clamping down on Upper State Street or the outlying areas. The threshold is already there. If you have a cumulative impact today, in today's system, you know, you can't move forward. The properties that are being affected by economic, global economic transitions like the internet are in that boat today. So, what we're proposing is just how do we, how do we move forward, given the fact that the council's saying, "Hey, we need to, we still need to grow. And we're going to have traffic impacts, and that's okay. But we don't want to have any traffic congestion." So, we're just trying to meet in the middle and choose areas. You know, I tried to say during the presentation, even by having all the residential go in the outlying areas that we're saying yes to, and having that 1,000 square feet go here and there, we're going to have traffic impacts that'll be worse today, tomorrow, than they are today. And I wish Michael Jordan was here. He couldn't be at the meeting, but he's constantly saying, "Where's the traffic?" And he recently moved his office to Upper State Street, and he made a confession to me that he found the traffic. And, you know, so, this is just a decision you have to make. You know, do we want to create the flexibility at the cost of more incremental congestion, knowing that there are no more answers to fix that? Is it worth it? We're just saying that it's worth it in the downtown. And I believe that we've, you know, all the things that were said from the speakers that you can't, you can if you move the clay, which doesn't exist today. That's a whole nother paradigm that does not exist today. You cannot today move square footage down the street and take the traffic trips with you. That isn't allowed. That is, to me, that is a profound change of flexibility that will create creative thinking, that will enable people who are frustrated today to do something tomorrow. So, that's how we'd answer that, and back to you.
Madam Chair.
Morrison. Well, I'm very sympathetic with Mr. Leider. I know from my own driving around town, I go, "Oh, opportunity site. Oh, opportunity site. Oh, we could do something there." You see these pockets of places, especially when we are thinking of community benefits, such as senior housing, or, you know, you really see these things. And I appreciate you using a case study for us, because that, I've looked at that site and wondered, "Gosh, I hope something happens there pretty soon." You know, because it just continues to degrade. And so, I would encourage careful, careful looking at these sorts of opportunity sites and not make them lost opportunities. So, you know, when you consider something like the location of that particular auto dealership, proximity to the Cottage Hospital, this sort of thing, proximity to, you know, if you make the Caire Real Two Way again, and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that, as you say, moving things around, not the clay, though, not the T E D R thing, but the, but just looking at how that neighborhood can function instead of dysfunction, I think wraps everything. It's what it's used for, it's how, it's purpose, it's benefit, and the type of use. Because, say, for instance, a senior housing might not generate a lot of trips, because a lot of people inside there don't have cars anymore.
Senior housing would be allowed.
Oh, okay. I'm just checking. You know, I mean...
On that particular site, as Mr. Leider explained, it has, the base residential zone is E3. And that was really part of a whole specific plan called Rancho Arroyo. And greater densities were allowed on other properties nearby. There is senior housing. There's also some affordable and family housing out there as well. We have explained that if he wanted to come forward with the owner and a developer and seek a different housing type of project, all of this aside, let's say maximum flexibility, we don't have this kind of traffic discussion. That would require a rezone of the property and a discussion with the city council and the planning commission.
Okay.
So, this program doesn't in and of itself restrict residential. It would still need its own environmental review, or perhaps we'd be able to rely on the Plan Santa Barbara EIR as well. So, the Plan Santa Barbara process could end up helping in a scenario, a certain residential scenario.
Oh, that's very helpful.
But I wanted to also answer all these opportunity sites or unpredictability of the future. We've been really living with that for the last 20-plus years. There are many sites in Santa Barbara that you might go by and see an old abandoned Craviato Iron Works, and have people come in and want to build a four-story building there downtown, because it's obsolete. Well, it's not really, actually, today. It's a thriving enterprise with new people doing ironwork, so it's pretty exciting. But there have been times where development on that site was foreclosed. You know, we have traffic impacts downtown, rebuild the existing square footage and add only 3,000 square feet, because those have been the rules for 20 years here. So, I guess where staff is coming from is 20-plus years of experience, you know? And we have had many conversations where, "Oh, somewhere else, you could look at this site and just come in and propose 25,000 square feet." And we meet with people and say, "Well, we have a growth management ordinance, and the allowances are 3,000 square feet." And again, we look at what's happened in the community and what we heard people say during the whole Plan Santa Barbara process, that the amount of growth that occurred was probably an appropriate amount of growth. The whole discussion about allowing 1.35 million square feet is the next increment. That major policy decision has been made. And the way that that 1.35 million gets allocated is in small increments. So, that is our starting point. It is a restrictive environment. It is limiting development. What are the flexibility tools that we want to go along with that? Because, again, Measure E and the past 20 years has had both, the restrictions and some flexibility. The transfer of existing development rights, the room-for-room replacement in hotels. And so, that's why we're having this conversation. Again, there'll be a baseline of fairly restrictive allocations. And then, what tools do you want for flexibility? And how flexible? All the way open, flexible? Or constrained and hopefully not too complicated, but prescribed flexibility? And in working with Mr. Vincent on the ordinance that we will be bringing to the planning commission, I just want to say that we envision a special section on specific plans as well. There's the Rancho Arroyo specific plan. There's the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan that was mentioned, the Rock Pile, Mr. Wright's property. The Park Plaza specific plan. And I know there's another one or two, commercial, non-residential specific plan areas that we want to be sure are laid out, what have been prior commitments of the city in terms of square footage and so forth. But we're trying to also figure out the rules that apply across the board, you know, to everyone as well. So, thank you.
Can you have a thought you wanted to?
Yeah, actually, I was thinking while Betty was doing this, how, first of all, I'm sorry I brought that up in a way, because it takes away from the traffic discussion. But at the other, but they are kind of Siamese twins in our brains, because we've had them travel together for so long. You know, it's a difficult thing, at least for me, to just say, "Oh, all right. We're not going to worry about it." And it's something I work on, because it's just, you know, you go down that road. You know, you're the, what does my husband call it when I get like that? A Mississippi mule. That's it. You know, you don't look left or right. This is okay. This is the policy. And, you know, and so, I'm just saying that, you know, I get it. It just takes some time to work it. So, you've got to work it a little bit. So, that's why I brought that up. But they're Siamese twins to me, so, you know, they're conjoined, traffic development. Now, we're unbundling and saying, "Okay, never mind." Okay, under certain circumstances. So, I mean, I know I'm oversimplifying it, and I get it, and I'm working on it.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Well, first, I'd like to ask a question. I understood the comment that you can now transfer non-residential footage and the related traffic impacts within the same zone or from the outlying zones to downtown. Are you forced to do that? Or can you transfer just the square footage and not the traffic and leave the traffic with that site?
Mr. Dayton?
Well, we hadn't imagined that scenario, but we did talk about it... Well, we hadn't imagined that scenario, but we did talk about it a little bit in that, yeah, you know, where it came up, where we kind of started thinking about what if, like on Sandman, for instance, they haven't moved forward, but what if they came on another project, they're thinking about maybe another project that's all residential. They, what we figured is, and we asked that question, would they leave the traffic trips to offset their residential development? Well, in the new proposal, they wouldn't need to, because the residential could have a cumulative impact. So they could still take, does that help your thinking? They could still take all the...
Well, it does, but, you know, the example that Mr. Leider put out of the auto dealership, it has a tiny amount of square footage, but I'm sure it has a ton of traffic, given the nature that it was an automobile dealership. So you move that little bit of footage, you know, in a desirable location downtown, you don't need to take all the traffic with you for 2,400 square feet. Why wouldn't you leave some of it to keep some viability on that site? And then why couldn't you treat that site, now that you've moved that footage, as a vacant site, just like the other triangle? Just because the other one's been vacant longer, why should they be treated different now? If you've moved that commercial footage to a more desirable area, now why couldn't that site be treated just like a vacant site, like the one a block away? Why is it being hampered? I'm not quite sure why the timelines and why they'd be treated different, so.
Speak to the partials.
One of the things that we're thinking about with the transfer within the area issue is this baseline traffic analysis in the Plan Santa Barbara EIR, what existed in 2008, and then the study of added development on top of that, to paint the picture for future traffic concerns in the community. So we were trying to hold a status quo amount of traffic in the outlying areas in terms of non-residential traffic generation, and saying additional residential, because that is the higher priority land use, and because many of these commercial areas have really a fair amount of commercial already, in terms of serving the community, that the, it's a status quo situation, as Mr. Dayton explained. And that's really what we were thinking, and I forgot your question. I don't know if I answered it or not, I'm sorry.
Well, it was, yeah, I was just trying to understand, if you have to transfer the traffic with the square footage, or if you still have the flexibility of just transferring the footage, and you would still have the traffic that was related to that site as your baseline threshold for some new use you want to put on that site, rather than just lose all of it?
That's a new concept, and I think it could certainly be considered.
And then the other idea I had, it's great to be able to move the clay, but, you know, we're maybe beyond it in terms of policy discussion, but it would be great if there was a way to convert the clay, not just move it, keep the same, here's non-residential clay, and here's residential clay, actually equate the clay to its true impacts. They each have impacts on traffic and utilities and all the other things, so that you can convert it to a different use without having to transfer it just to a different site in its same configuration.
And Commissioner Bartlet, that comment comes from the last, the thinking in the last 20 years. So I totally know where that comment originates. Once you get into the new, what we're proposing, you don't have to think that way, because residential is already okay.
Right.
You don't have to do the net new game anymore. Residential can stand on its own, it's anticipated to have an impact. So therefore, the value becomes your non-residential, to keep it on site.
Okay.
Or to transfer it. And so I think that, and that may be also where...
So it does start doing that, in essence.
You do get a lot more flexibility, you don't have to look at the net new, we're anticipating impacts with residential.
Right.
And you get to move that.
Yeah, you can transfer the non-residential clay, and now you can replace it with residential clay.
With the residential.
You don't need to convert it from one to the other.
Now you got it.
Okay. I was starting to connect the dots here.
Could I just ask a question related to what you're asking? If some, if a T E D R took place from an outlying area to downtown without the traffic impacts, with it, wouldn't it need to go downtown with the traffic impacts?
That's what we've been, that's what we've been trying to do. And I just want, I want to say, we had a little conversation before the meeting, and Commissioner Campanella would like to not be here for all the transfer discussions, I would just want to honor that, just because he's got development ties and transferred, and so he doesn't want to have an appearance of conflict of interest. So maybe what we'll do is hold that to the very end and have that conversation all at once, so that he can, he could choose to leave, or, do you want to say something about that?
Well, could I just, I would just wanted to finish that thought. Let's say you had a non-residential use in the outline zone, and you were going to move it downtown, and you needed, it had 200 trips or whatever, just to pick a number, in the outline zone, but when you move it downtown, it only needs 100. Can you transfer 100 of those trips downtown and then leave the other 100 at your site that you transferred from, your donor site?
Well, I think we could look at those nuances.
Because you're trying to work for a baseline of traffic.
And, again, we're trying to reduce traffic congestion, one of our goals. So it's very attractive to have square footage move with its traffic and generate half as much traffic in a different location of the city. So, and then there's also the simplicity of it, we're making it, you know, try, but we can look at that, we can think about that, because we have it.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Do you want to...
Mr. Thompson and then Commissioner Campanella.
To follow on to Commissioner Bartlet's question, Betty, the part that maybe you forgot, I'm kind of interested to hear. In a site like was the subject site we were discussing, let's say the small amount of square footage, commercial square footage is transferred to the core area, when does that property, when in your vision, does that property now be able to be treated as a vacant parcel? Do you envision changing from what we've been doing?
We were not envisioning changing from what we've been doing. The last 20-plus years, the definition of vacant land was based on a vacant land survey, and an ability of a property owner to demonstrate that it was vacant prior to October 88. And the removal of improvements to property to create a vacant parcel would, and then all those potential floor area allocations would upset the allocation amount that has been set aside in that category for vacant land. Again, in managing a limited resource of 1.35 million square feet, the council and the planning commission, all our discussions to date have divided that new non-residential floor area into specific categories, and one category is vacant. And that's based on the vacant land survey that was done in the 80s. So, so no change is recommended.
Mr. Campanella.
A point on Rob, we're specifically talking about the transfer density program that currently exists, and I'm not going to have any discussion on that. But in general, I think one of the things, general terms, of the development of residential housing, and I think the economic development of commercial use really have to go hand in hand as we go forward. Other cities are looking at that now, the state's looking at it, how do you replace redevelopment? And it's going to take a combination of new investment, as Mr. Leider said, that really has to come in, and the numbers have to work for everyone, and the money's not going to come from the city. There's no redevelopment dollars left anymore. So the city's part really is going to be on policy and helpful with implementation, to try to regenerate what's needed socially, but at the same time provide returns for those that would like to invest. Here, for example, in the city, having looked at, prior to coming on board on the planning commission, what the opportunity sites might hold, it really came down to, how do you, number one, how do you assemble enough of the smaller parcels, really to get scale enough to do a multifamily or mixed-use project that makes sense? And then, secondly, how do you encourage a landowner to part with his property that currently may have a commercial use, which has no debt on it, collecting income? How do you incentivize him to partake in something that might reduce the amount of residential square footage that remains, but then get into a speculative venture on either for sale or for rent housing? I think the ability to move things around, as we're talking about within the same zone especially, is that now you could start assembling properties without needing the same landowner to be part of that transaction, without having to merge lots. You're more flexible, and that it could be on the next block or a block over, where, let's say you could provide the square footage for new uses or offers or new technologies, and have workers then occupy the space that you just moved it off. And then your traffic really improves. So I like the idea of both from a financial encouragement to those that own the property, to those that are going to invest it, that this gives you your opportunity. And ideally, as we look back to the charrette that was done strictly with residential property, I mean, you start envisioning maybe blocks or areas that could get redeveloped where appropriate, Upper State Street corridor, the CM zone, where between new commercial and new residential, now you can start thinking about parking structures, new type ways to park, mid-block passages, community spaces. Because now you're not going to lose square footage. And now you're adding things, and I think adding to something that you already have is going to be much more economically viable and result in more predictable rents and for-sale prices than having to give up something of value to get there. So I think for those reasons, I like what I'm hearing. And that flexibility, plus removing a lot of the uncertainty on the approval process and time, could really be helpful of trying to achieve both housing and economic development at the same time. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions for your staff. Ms. Wiese, you mentioned rezoning for the Hitchcock property. That is something that could be applied for right now, couldn't it?
Yes.
Okay, or under the new proposal.
Yes. From staff's point of view, the discussion regarding the Hitchcock property, to a large degree, is not much different today and the future, when you consider traffic impacts as they would exist under the Plan Santa Barbara EIR. And again, given its location in fairly close proximity to a freeway interchange, that interchange, I believe, is at one of the dots in the impacted scenario? Oh, so that's helpful, but it's near some. Anyway, we have explained those options under the current PD zone. The, one of the differences is that the room-for-room replacement sort of transfer, we haven't really looked at whether or not, but we have talked with Mr. Dayton about it, rooms from downtown in the hotel bundle of rooms moving to Upper State Street. Now, there isn't a limitation per se, that kind of transfer from downtown to Upper State of room-for-room replacement. But what we would find now is looking at all those rooms and as new traffic generators in the Upper State Street area. So that would be a big problem for that site. Whereas in the new scenario, if rooms were transferred from within the site, at the area of Upper State, then it would be more flexible. So it's hard to say that the new approach is more restrictive overall, in my opinion, for the Hitchcock Rancho Arroyo sites. It's fairly restrictive now, as well.
Okay. Then, my other question was about the Craviota property. What can happen now, which apparently is essentially nothing, and under this, what you're proposing now, what could happen with that property?
Let's take the corner of Santa Barbara and Ortega Street and say it's all one lot. I don't really remember if there's a smaller piece, but it's a corner lot in downtown Santa Barbara, and there's a one-story building on half of it, and no parking. Now, they could propose demolition of the existing building and a 3,000-square-foot addition, under small addition, and housing. Let's say that's the scenario. We would need to analyze the new non-residential floor area. We'd probably find now that maybe they don't have a traffic impact, depending on how you follow those five trips. But in the future, when we switch to relying on the Plan Santa Barbara EIR, that new small addition, we would want it recognized as contributing to a cumulative, long-term traffic impact. So it would need an ability to move forward under a different kind of ordinance than the one we have now. And that's why we're talking about allowing the new ordinance cumulative impacts. So now, if now means same sort of traffic analysis, maybe they could do a small addition and housing there. But if now overlays the understanding of long-term cumulative traffic impacts, they can't do the small addition now. That's a really big thing that changes, is the way we do traffic methodology now, of following five trips, looking at a smaller group of foreseeable future projects in your cumulative versus a cumulative that's a longer-term full build-out of Plan Santa Barbara. So those are really the big differences. The Craviota site, well, any site downtown Santa Barbara, in a corner like that, I think is more flexible in the future. That's what a number of your colleagues are saying as well. We're recognizing that development in the downtown would contribute to a cumulative impact, but they could do their small addition, they could partner with others in the community, either locally within the downtown, or even be a receiving site from outlying areas for a transfer and additional building. So it's more flexible in the future.
If they wanted to do a mixed-use project, and with as much residential as they could squeeze onto that, would they be able to do that?
Yes. And today as well, when we did see a project at that site many years ago, it was a mixed-use project, and I believe it's in the medium-high cutout of the historic district. So it's not a high-density or an overlay site. Many sites within the downtown are at the medium-high density because of the concern of the historic core. So that would be probably mixed use at a medium-high sort of average unit density condominiums or apartments, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Bartlet?
When I first joined the commission, I think one of the, first of the big projects that I reviewed was the Sandman project. And there was something interesting on that, because it was, it was two parcels, it was proposing two different uses. It was proposing, you know, residential on the larger parcel, and it started out proposing a hotel or non-residential on the smaller parcel. And what they had done is taken the residential density on the hotel site and added that to the allowable residential on the residential site. So they boosted the residential density on that site, and then they took the commercial allowance on the larger site and transferred it to the smaller hotel site. So they kind of did a horizontal mixed use on two separate adjacent parcels, but they were able to increase the capacity of each of those uses on the individual parcels. Is that viable under this new direction that you're heading, rather than always having to merge parcels together and have a vertical mixed-use project? Can you transfer your residential density on one site to the adjacent site, and then take your commercial from this site and put it on the, so that you can have two different uses adjacent to each other with the same combined total as if you merged the parcels and did one big conglomerate project?
Ms. Wiese, we haven't been considering transfer residential densities as part of this discussion at all. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be looked at. The Plan Santa Barbara, the general plan, does have some indication of a program to consider for residential densities and transfers. The primary purpose there was to preserve open space. But it could also be, this came up in the development of the historic resources element as well. And so within that proposed element, there's a strategy suggested that there could be a transfer of development potential residential as well, to preserve historic buildings. But this program itself is not envisioning taking that.
Well, how was the transfer handled in that particular instance?
Well, Sandman was a little bit different in that it is all presently one lot. And so that development potential currently existed today across its entirety. They wanted to create a subdivision, so that one was a subdivision of condominiums, and one was a separately commercially zoned and...
So it's just like one big condo map on...
Right, so it was a two-step thing. When you look at the current site, all the development potential for the residential and the commercial existed as one whole. And so it really wasn't increasing or transferring. It established it, and then it carved out a commercial corner. It established it, and then it carved out a commercial corner. And that's the only time that I'm aware that we've done that.
So it only really works when you're doing a subdivision and not when you have two adjacent, separate parcels?
That's the only time I'm aware that we've done anything like that. But again, keeping the, I realize that mixed-use is important and how people choose to either build commercial or housing or mixed-use, that's all important in the growth management scenario. But we're trying primarily to focus on development potential of the non-residential type. Because housing, pretty much as you've seen across the board, is supported and allowed at these different levels that the general plan and zoning establish, you know, citywide. So it's really, the conversation's more about straight non-residential.
But I mean, in terms of flexibility, it seems like you could get to the same place by taking those two parcels, merge them together, then transfer all the residential to one and commercial to the other, and then split them again. It just seems like you could get there, but why put people through that? Why don't we have that flexibility?
Well, I don't know that we couldn't have it. I'm not saying that it couldn't be there, but I don't think that that's, we're trying to get this ordinance adopted. And the focus of this is on the non-residential. I mean, we could keep in this toolbox to the side perhaps some of these additional flexibility mechanisms. As the whole transfer of existing development rights itself, the current ordinance came five years after the initial, you know, implementation of the Measure E program. So, and we do have the adaptive management program and all these things that we're going to be monitoring. So the need for flexibility, running into a project that doesn't fit, and it should, that is always, that's always there as a possibility. But we're trying to keep the basic, get the basic bones of this program understood.
One of the things I like about this proposal is that you can no longer transfer development rights from downtown to outlying areas, and the Sandman was an example of that. Some of their square footage came from the 000 block of West Figueroa. You know, just the most, not set. Yeah, you know, just exactly the opposite of.
The whole hotel is non-residential. They built, they proposed more than the existing hotel square footage? I, I'm not sure what people are remembering on that. I think they actually had a credit of non-residential.
I think they started with that, I'll put, and then they dropped that.
Okay.
But that, they were originally proposing to do that, which was, of course, the exact opposite of what is and was desirable. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Dayton primarily. One of the things you mentioned earlier, that the direction of the general plan and what we're trying to do here is to develop an adaptive management program for determining traffic mitigation. So would you talk about your traffic model and how you plan to use it under the new scenario here and how it would be used? Would you run the model on every project or periodically? So would you discuss how this new proposal would meld with your traffic model?
That's a great question. Thanks. So first, we need to outline how we're going to, how we would pay for that. But we do feel like if we use the model, it'll be much cheaper for developers because they won't be going out and hiring for individual projects and doing larger traffic studies, and a model run can be a lot cheaper than a traffic study. So the way it would work is right now, when we're looking at traffic studies, we're looking at the cumulative, we're looking for cumulative traffic impact. So in the future, if this, the proposal was to move forward, we wouldn't be looking for that level anymore. The next level we'd be looking for is, we'd be asking ourselves, is this development going to trigger a project-specific impact? That would be the next level. So Steve Foley is here, and we work together. He's the one who's in charge of leading that determination as to what level the proposed development will trigger. So what he'll be doing is, but right now, we do a back-of-napkin, what, do we think it's going to trigger a cumulative impact? And if we think it is, then we say, hey, you need a traffic study. So now we'll be doing back-of-napkin to figure out, do we think it's going to be a project-specific impact? If we think it is, then that will trigger a model run to see if, in fact, that's true. And again, we've got to get the metrics for paying for that, but we think it'll be cheaper overall in the development process. And you'll get a consistent, a consistent-looking report that will probably be internally generated that will have the same approach every single time using the model.
Okay. So in the adaptive management portion of this, do you feed back all of these projects as they are studied to improve your model, to be more predictive? I mean, that's what an adaptive management program would presume, you adapt what you find.
There's two elements to that. One is what you mentioned, which would be all the developments that are happening. We want to count for those and make sure they're measured in the model. But the other thing is, probably three times during the plan period, we'll have to recalibrate the model to existing traffic. It's more accurate if you're comparing to existing counts. And so that traditionally happens in a five-to-seven-year window. And that is a little bit more expensive to go out and do those counts and then recalibrate the model, but that's what would happen. That's how we would keep it accurate.
Generally, it's been said that Measure E worked very well.
Minor versus small.
But we still got a lot more traffic.
Haven't had any comment on that.
Because square footage was used in different ways with more employees. So with the way it's proposed to be formatted, how will it be different? The ultimate control is simply the amount of square footage that's allowed. But we won't have quite the same, you know, you won't be sitting there and saying no all the time. Just every once in a while, it looks like.
Well, not much at all.
Not much at all, yes.
And then if we do get the project-specific level, if, depending upon where the impact is, if it's an outlying area, maybe the answer is no, if that's what you choose, we think you should. But if it's, say, maybe there's a mitigation strategy too, that could still come into play. So as it does today, if there's a project that rises to the level of a project-specific impact and we identify that, they can find a way to mitigate maybe with an improvement. It could be possible still. Or they can reduce their development to duck under the project-specific level so that it's on target with the plan. So that there are options. I don't think that there's too many where we say no, it'll be more like a conversation. And then your other question about, well, we had this other thing that happened in the last 20 years, and that was employees shifting to the place where they live, and now they're getting to work, and now we've introduced a lot more traffic on freeways. That is predicted to continue. That is very volatile, though, based on the price of gas. So it's, when the price of gas goes up, we saw one of, a couple of things happening. I could no longer afford to make that commute, or I have to shift modes, or I have to, you know, if I can't afford it, I have to move my job, or I have to, you know, things have to move. So the economy is going to be volatile based on gas prices, and we can't predict what's going to happen. And you've heard me mention before that when, if, if and when the Sixth Lane Freeway goes on, there'll be a lot more PM peak hour trips arriving at one time. That could be another factor. With the AMP, I think, the adaptive management program and with the recalibration of the model, I think we'll get those milestones to say, here's what the situation is today, here's how it relates to the plan, and then have the opportunity to apply mitigation measures or redo the plan. That was, that was the strategy, to avoid the unintended consequences that have places in the planning period where you're trying to avoid those. And so I think we'll have that opportunity to have that conversation for those unforeseen circumstances.
Obviously, what this community needs is more housing rather than more commercial. And so everything that works toward that is what I personally would like to see. Anyone else? Commissioner Thompson?
I've got another question for Rob and Betty. The focus group, one of the items that they several mentioned was to allow consideration of every project on its merits. And I got the impression that your general feedback was negative on that. You wanted to discuss why, why that wouldn't be a viable thing in the future to, if somebody wanted to go to the expense of having a project considered and try it.
The idea here is that at a plan level, without having just the individual project in front of you, thinking community-wide, that if less development potential exists in these outlying areas, then that will reduce the future traffic congestion that we're not feeling now. So it's really thinking ahead that over time, these additional model runs and calibrations and changes in commute patterns and the freeway, that we will see increased congestion. So rather than say, let's just wait and see, well, here's the other reason, is that we already know now, based on the Plan Santa Barbara EIR, that all these projects do contribute to cumulative traffic. So let's say we were going to consider all the projects on their merits. Would one of the findings in this ordinance be, we're okay with your traffic? We know everyone contributes, and it would be discretionary for the Planning Commission to say, we know that all the projects create traffic, but now that we're seeing you, Project X, in Upper State Street in year 2018, we don't want that much traffic now. Is that really on the project's merits? I'm just, I'm not sure. So that's why we stepped back and said, kind of as a whole, let's programmatically try to reduce the amount of traffic out there. But the alternative would be have one of the merits of the project measurements that the Planning Commission be, case by case. This does not lend to a lot of certainty, in my way of seeing. We'll decide when your project comes to us if we like that amount of traffic. So.
Well, most of your projects could have the certainty, but if somebody, that's what I said, if somebody wanted to go to the trouble and expense of pushing through one that would require a case-by-case evaluation, why couldn't we do that?
I think that's the recommend, along the lines of the recommendation of Mr. Shell, like, why are you saying that the certainty level stops at 1,000 square feet? Could you say the certainty level is 3,000 and then build into your ordinance, you can propose it over 1,000 or over 3,000, but projects of that size have an additional standard of review at the Planning Commission as to whether or not they want to accept that level of, you know, additional level of traffic contribution. So that is certainly possible. And as staff, as we have discussed this, we think the policy basis within the general plan, because the council made the major decision overall about encouraging housing and limiting non-residential, that that outcome of this process could be found consistent with the general plan. We're putting a little more emphasis on other parts of the general plan as well that said, let's focus development in transit and multimodal-rich areas and areas where you might get reductions or better management of traffic issues. But on a whole, that outcome of allowing all projects on the merits is certainly an option before you and the council. But we have chosen not to do that because we think that the balance should maintain some, like this historic restricting sort of elements. Did you want to add?
Yeah. Yeah. The overall goals of the general plan are to direct growth in where we have that synergy, where we have the multimodal-rich areas like the downtown, where we can mitigate the traffic and where the traffic is naturally mitigated by the grid system and by the ability to walk or bike. When you put it out in Outer State Street, you have that. And so you, by allowing projects to come in and any project in the outer areas to be judged on their merit, you're just doubling the traffic on each one of those projects, essentially, when you compare it to the same project being built either in the downtown area or using, moving the clay and using existing square footages in that area. It's, for us, it's a pretty simple, a simple set of reasoning, and it's proved to be effective over the last 20 years in terms of regulating what small increment we have. And I think everybody needs to keep that in mind, that the big picture here is that we're limiting growth, non-residential growth, over the next 20 years to half of what Measure E was, is 1.35. And so we're going to be metering that out pretty carefully. And, you know, the direction is A, residential, and B for non-residential, it needs to be where it's most effective. And the downtown area is where it's most effective. And, you know, one thing leads to another, and pretty soon you've got three or four projects in the Outer State Street area, and it defeats the purpose.
One more thing on these areas, you know, they're known to all of us. Outer State Street area has been an area of traffic concern. That's why it has the SD2 overlay. So continuing to be cautious about traffic in Upper State Street and Outer State Street makes sense. The Mesa, they, when people from the Mesa area go downtown, or from people downtown go to the Mesa, they go through the Correo Interchange. That's an impacted intersection. Coast Village Road, next to Montecito, part of Montecito, depending on your point of view, you know, it's not like that area has been clamoring for Santa Barbara-style downtown development. In fact, I think I've heard many people say the contrary to that. So these outer areas, when you think about what the history has been and what the conversations have been about development, we think it also makes sense that those areas would remain more limited than the opportunities of the downtown.
Mr. Dayton?
Yeah, and then I would just, I would just add that what hasn't been said is, you know, this is a plan with a long, long-term, right, congestion in 20 years. But I think in the areas we're talking about, particularly Upper State Street and Coast Village Road, we're there today. It's not a tomorrow issue. I mean, I hear about traffic on Upper State Street all the time. When we had the Upper State Street study, you heard all the comments, you know, they're not in the room today. But I'm just speaking from a staff perspective of what I've heard, that this is not where we want more traffic. We are allowing more traffic on Upper State Street with, we have opened the door. It's just not wide open. And I think that's, we've allowed for the economic growth to happen up there, but we're not opening the valve all the way.
And I, for one, think that that is the better approach, to continue to cautiously permit this kind of development.
And one last comment, too, to address the area of the Mesa. In fact, the only area in these outer, what we're calling the outer development areas that is slated for higher-density development is the Lacumbra-Five Points area, and that would typically be done through a planned development, a specific plan kind of a thing. There's no higher-density being proposed in the Mesa. There's no higher-density being proposed in Coast Village Road, none in the Cottage area. You know, we've heard this loud and clear from the community, that's not where they want to see the residential happening. And concurrently, you look in those areas, the Mesa's got two grocery stores, tons of great restaurants. I mean, you know, do they really need more commercial development out there? Coast Village Road, they'd hang me high if I proposed, you know, higher commercial or residential development. So I think that's a fallacious argument about that. You know, again, the only exception is Lacumbra and Five Points, and we all recognize that that's a special set of circumstances.
Well, and as Mr. Lider said, people are buying cars off the internet, they're also buying everything else off over the internet. And it seems to me... And it seems to me that it just, that the city already has more than adequate amount of commercial zoning.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Schwartz and then Mr. Hart.
I have a question for staff, so excuse me if you've, if you've mentioned this. Of the 1.35 million that we're, that we're going for, that's been approved by the council to target, do you know what potential we have in Zones 1 and 2, this is, you know, on Slide 10 of the PowerPoint, versus 3 and 4, so the downtown versus the non-downtown, if in fact, there's support for focusing in on providing the commercial in Zones, what I'm going to call Zones 1 and 2, that I think Mr. Dayton has identified as such?
Ms. Wees?
We did include in the model and the Plan Santa Barbara analysis, development potential studies for all areas of the city. And we looked at distributing the 1.35 million square feet kind of citywide. The development potential exceeds the 1.35 million, you know, in terms of...
You mean citywide?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, again, if every single parcel in the city were to seek its 3,000-square-foot addition, the 1.35 million is not enough. So that's why this is a paced development program. If you think, we've talked about this, there were years where the 30,000 square feet available per year to be allocated to properties was not enough for the number of people wanting to get it that year. So this is a 20-year plan that paces development. The 1,000 square feet, anyone can come in any day, up to 1,000 square feet and add. But your question about, do we know if the development potential is greater downtown or uptown? If you just imagine the number of parcels involved, just think of, yes, it is greater downtown, because there are more commercial parcels downtown, and this growth management ordinance is based on development potential per parcel. So the commercially-zoned parcels in the downtown area, there are a larger number of them than there are in the Upper State Street area.
So would you say then, it's a logical balance between our strategy, which is to target Zones 1 and 2 for additional commercial, and the available parcels that would allow for that? I mean, if we had an unrealistic strategy, because there actually weren't the land opportunities, then I would say, hmm, you know, we're, we're not calibrating our strategy with the actual land opportunities. But it sounds to me, if I'm understanding your answer, that we have, we match those up. Do you know what I'm saying?
In the growth sense, yes. But I can tell you, on an individual property owner standpoint, that doesn't matter. I own a parcel of land in the Upper State Street area, what is my development potential? So, and that's what we're trying to think of it in both terms. I appreciate your question on the large, larger scenario, but I think also what we're really focused on regularly is explaining to an individual property owner how much potential they have to improve their property.
But here today, we're looking at it more from the macro, not, I mean, we're not looking at specific projects today, even though some have been used as examples in conversation or in public comment. We're looking at an ordinance, we're looking at policies that allow for a macro view with flexibility and that are based in reality.
Yes, both, I believe we're looking at both macro and micro, because the ordinance then does apply, you know, case by case as people come in.
Okay.
Mr. Bartlet?
You know, one last thought, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. Although you've kind of limited the amount of non-residential square footages, you know, with these proposed policies, what you have loosened up on is the intensification of use within the square footage that exists. It's not being restricted like it was before, where if you have a warehouse, you can't go to anything more intense than a warehouse. So to me, I think that is good on the flexibility side, especially when you see abandoned gas stations that have lost all the traffic use, they've been sitting there for more than a year because of cleanup, and now you have derelict gas stations on our most prime sites. So I think there's some advantages to this flexibility, and granted, we're not getting more square footage, but at least you could put something more valuable in that little footage that you have and make better use of those prime sites.
I do want to clarify or reiterate, one of the key components of this plan, from the staff standpoint, is the year 2008 in terms of our traffic analysis. So there, I think this is flexible moving forward based on that timeframe, is what we're talking about, demolitions and transfers that are from that point forward, yes.
Anyone else? All right, have you?
I think the city attorney may have a question or two.
Madam Chair, as I've been sitting here and I've heard some of the commissioners' questions, there are a couple of things that we're trying to do here. One is, is the fact, recognizing what were the underlying assumptions of the general plan and the general plan EIR. There were certain growth assumptions, and we set policies ultimately based on those assumptions, that our growth pattern going forward for the next 20 years is going to look like the growth pattern we had for the last 20 years. And that has, you know, we had a certain amount of growth within that period of time, and we're anticipating the same amount of growth. So that's how you, that informed the total, the 1.35, and that's your macro discussion of how this ordinance is working and how it's a growth management ordinance. A mid-level application of this ordinance is the zones concept or the areas concept, because we're trying to focus that 1.35 or a majority, you know, it's hard to say 50%, 51% or whatever, but the policies in the general plan informed by the EIR is saying, put your non-residential growth downtown, it'll be, and your residential, new residential growth downtown. It'll be less impactful if you do it there than you do it in the outlying areas. So what staff, one of the, the next thing that staff is doing in this proposal and the recommendations to you, is setting up policy restrictors that say, put your square footage down there. You can transfer your square footage from outside to inside. So it's trying to implement the policies. The last part of this is that we're also trying to have this ordinance, the consistency and the, and not so much the flexibility, but the easing the process, taking advantage of that general plan EIR and avoiding the repetitive sequo analysis. We need to match up this ordinance and this development plan ordinance with the general plan policy and the analysis that occurred in the general plan EIR if we're going to tier off of that EIR. So when the conversation was going on about minor additions or small additions, which one should be given, you know, what should, what should be part of the, you know, just a given, you can, you can have a minor addition and still be considered within the general plan policies and the EIR that analyzed those policies. We're pretty confident that minor additions were considered. The development of vacant property, as previously done under Measure E, under the development plan ordinance now, we're thinking that that was part of the general plan policies that the council approved and that the EIR analyzed. I think that the commission and the council could consider a square footage of a small addition as being within there. But when we get to something beyond a small addition, I think you're starting to get in an area where that's starting to go beyond where the policies of, as the whole, of the general plan. We were looking at anticipating some kind of continuation of growth management, and to, to completely move away from the minor addition or small addition categories as, as being considered in the general plan policies and analyzed in the general plan EIR, that starts moving outside that, and I think we would lose some of the usefulness of being able to tier off the general plan EIR to provide some, the ease of process that this proposal that council, that staff is proposing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. The staff had enough feedback from...
Yes, well, we were asked to come back for a second conversation on this topic, because it does take a real effort to get in and look at these things and ask these questions. So it's, this has been very, very helpful. I think you all know that we're going to be back in two weeks requesting an extension of the current ordinance, because even, even with all this diligent work that we're doing in order to get the new ordinance adopted with an effective date 30 days later before January 1st, 2013, is going to be, I think we've decided, impossible. So we're working very hard to now take all of this discussion and bring it to you. Again, when you consider it at that future public hearing, it's before you, to make your recommendation, you could go one way or another or whatever, but what we were hoping today is to, to have you understand what we're proposing, certainly have a healthy discussion and questions. But if you think that we should draft it with one, you know, less of this or more of that, that would be good to know. I think you're getting where we're coming from, and you're, you're wanting us to have flexibility. I think we maybe just need to continue to describe how much flexibility there is and why we still have these restrictions, which we've explained today. And I know that one commissioner couldn't be here today, and he's going to review the tape and perhaps provide staff some additional input as well. But my sense of it is, we're moving forward based on the staff proposal, certainly up for you in the future to decide, to modify, you know, the proposal based on your recommendation as a commission as a whole. But that's what we're going to do next. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item five, which is the administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. Staff, hearing officer liaison report.
That would be me. Thank you, Madam Chair. This would be for the September 5th meeting. There were three items on this show agenda, three approved modifications, although I, let's see, yeah, and nothing out of the ordinary. All were appropriate to the properties. And the next meeting, there are five items. After that, it looks on the calendar to be pretty bare, but maybe things will be picking up. Now, the other is HLC, and I have the report from the meeting of August 15th, and that would be, there's a proposal to landmark the eucalyptus trees at the library, which I think is kind of an interesting proposal. And also, 2300 Garden Street. Part of their process in developing it into the campus that it's becoming is, was hedging on landmark status, and it looks as though seven buildings will be going through that landmark status process. The thing that will come to us is the USA Gas, and that's at 340 West Correo, which is the gas station, right when you get off the freeway there, you know, there's a little gas station. And they want to put a mini-mark in there, so that'll require CUP, so that'll, that'll be coming to us. And the bridge on Chapala Street, 205 Chapala, got final. So that is done, and that's, that takes care of it. I wanted to make a little comment, you know, in all of our conversations about neighborhoods and things, when I saw this gas station, remaining a gas station, I was really excited because part of traffic is finding your way around to the gas stations, and as we, as we lose gas stations, it becomes a, it's small but a very important thing. Bill Mahan talked about it before he left office, that we should pay attention to the location of that type of service and the proximity, so, so I'm just carrying that over. Thanks. Oh, and Bruce and I, well, Bruce, you can cover it, because you're the real liaison there.
Mr. Bartlet? Yesterday, Commissioner Larson and myself attended the Highway 101 Design Review Team meeting, and our task was to review the proposed off-site landscape mitigation that was imposed when we revised the Salinas Street on and off ramps to allow for the third lane northbound, and the resultant loss of landscape both along the ramps and in the median. And the off-site remediation essentially occurs in the, the center highway median, starting at Mission Creek and going south to essentially Garden Street underpass, with intermediate breakups where you can't locate the landscape above under crossings, such as the, you know, some of the drainage at the base of Chapala, where the drainage goes under the freeway, and at the State Street undercrossing, and Garden Street undercrossing. But the concept there is, within the existing concrete K-rails that we have in the center median, is to lift the, the dirt grade elevation up within approximately three inches or so of the top of those rails, so that you can elevate the landscape so that you can see it. If you drive that stretch now, you don't see into the landscape at all at your eye line in the car. All you see are what's left of the few palm trees. I think we've lost over half of the palms that were in there, and the rest of them don't look very well. So what's being proposed is a, a mixture of palm trees. The king palms that are in there now don't seem to be liking that environment, so they're going to go with a mixture of queen palms, Sago palms, and the windmill fan palms, along with lower landscape shrubbery with some intermixed agave plants. And then the whole theme of that center divider is to not go with the real regimented equal spacing of palm trees, but do it slightly more clustered with, with gaps, so that we can open up, just like with a window, have views to the mountains and so forth. So it's a more random, and the trees are also staggered not down the center line of the divider. So I think it's going to be an interesting and welcome change. It'll be obviously a little disruptive while it's happening, but I think proposals to do most of that work in the evenings when they do get it scheduled. But I think if you look at what's there now, this will be a welcome improvement.
Good. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I wanted to add, we do get the decorative K-rail. He said, do you want the rocks or do you want the sandstone? And I said, well, I think the choice would be up to the Design Review Board. So having not seen the sandstone, you know, but I have seen the rock many times going up to, it's around Paso Robles, it's a significant difference, so it'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Thompson?
Couple of items from the Single Family Design Board. One is, we've got another project coming to us on Sea Ledge Lane. The Single Family Design Board looked at it at a concept level and had a lot of comments. It was a fairly aggressive proposal for the site, so it'd be interesting to see what they come back with. The other one that was kind of interesting, in light of the earlier discussion today from Mr. Sweeney about their purview isn't to tell somebody they can't do a two-story house and so forth. They had a proposal, a concept review, about a week ago, for a three-story house on a, what is a basically one-story cul-de-sac neighborhood, and they basically told them to go back and redesign it from square one. So they did do that. They, they didn't like it, and they told them so and sent them away.
Anyone else?
Harbor Commission had a presentation on climate change, and of course, that's the first place sea level rise is going to hit, and they're actually, in the work they've been doing on the breakwater, they've been raising it. And just a, they, part of the discussion was about the shipping in the channel and efforts to get, to reduce the speed, and it's, if they did, it would significantly reduce the emissions, and emissions from shipping in the channel do affect our air quality onshore, and it also helps the whales. They're less, less likely to run into whales. That's another interesting issue they've been dealing with. Anyone else? Okay. Well, before I adjourn, I want to remind everybody that today's First Thursday, a First Thursday, and all the art galleries and art museums are open this evening, as well, including the Channing Peak Gallery on the ground floor of the County Administration Building. So with that, County Commission meeting is, work is completed, and the meeting is adjourned.